Thank you for your patience. We are streaming.
Great, thank you. Welcome to the Board of Education meeting for August 6, 2025. I call this meeting to order. I want to remind those speaking during tonight's meeting that we use closed captioning on the YouTube livestream, so please speak as clearly as possible. Now I ask that you stand if able and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance in English and Spanish.
Pledge of Allegiance, due to the flag of the United States, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Puro civilidad a la materia de los Estados Unidos. Y a la que tu vida representa una nación a todos. En mi vida, como he tratado, y que yo sea un padre.
Thank you. We will move forward to the next item on our agenda, which is acknowledgement of tribal lands. We gratefully acknowledge the native peoples on whose homelands we gather, as well as the diverse and vibrant native communities who make their home here today. I'd like to next ask for a moment of silence for those who have given their lives in service to their country. Thank you. We'll move on to roll call. Dr. Albright, can we have a roll call, please?
Daniela Storga?
Here.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Here.
Heather Benavides?
Here.
Crystal Taffia Romero?
Here.
Josefina Dominguez?
Here.
Courtney Jackson?
Here.
Daniel Gonzalez?
Here. Our next item is to consider adoption of the August 6, 2025 Board of Education meeting agenda. As a reminder, per the APS Board of Education Governance Manual, board members can ask that an item be removed from the consent agenda before the meeting agenda is posted, but not during the meeting. We have a motion and a second.
I move to approve the minutes from the Board of Education meeting on July 16, 2025.
It's the adoption of the agenda.
Oh my gosh. I move to approve the adoption of the August 6, 2025 Board of Education meeting agenda. This is Board Member Jackson.
I'll...
Board Member Benavides.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Daniela Storga?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Heather Benavides?
Yes.
Crystal Taffia Romero?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Daniel Gonzalez?
Yes. Our next item is to consider approval of the minutes from the Board of Education meeting on July 16, 2025. Is there a motion and a second?
I move to approve the minutes from the Board of Education meeting on July 16, 2025. This is Board Member Dominguez.
I'll second. This is Member Jackson. Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Daniela Storga?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Heather Benavides?
Yes.
Crystal Taffia Romero?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Daniel Gonzalez?
Yes. Our next item is public forum. Board Secretary Storga, will you please share the instructions for public forum?
Yes, thank you. Welcome to our public forum guests. When you signed up to speak, you were asked to review rules and expectations which our presiding officer will enforce. The New Mexico Open Meetings Act requires that our agenda specify and advance the items that will be discussed and voted on during the meeting. Therefore, public forum is not a dialogue among speakers and board members, but rather a chance to hear from our community. We will call participants to speak in the order they signed up, whether in person or virtual. Those here with us tonight will be asked to come to the microphone at the back of the room when their name is called. Online guests will stay in a virtual waiting room until it is their turn to speak. We have set aside 45 minutes for public forum. If there are 22 or fewer speakers, you will each have two minutes to speak. Otherwise, you will have one minute. Tonight, we have 26 speakers, which means you will have one minute each. Once your time is up, you will be asked to quickly wrap up. If you feel unable to convey your message, you may email boarded@aps.edu. In addition, for those of you here tonight, a representative from our service center is here to assist you. Mr. Gonzalez, please introduce the speakers.
Thank you, Board Member Storga. Give me one moment, please. Okay, our first speaker this evening will be in the room. It is Mr. Tony Watkins. You'll have two minutes once you begin speaking, sir. Nope, let me make sure that mic's on. The mic's not on, hold on. Hey, try now, sir.
Hello, hello?
Yep. There you go.
Attendance was cited recently as the number one issue in APS. Ethnic Studies increases attendance and academic performance. We should expand Ethnic Studies. It was Foy's Family Engagement Policy and Organizing that helped open the door to more Ethnic Studies classes in APS. We were told our policy was archived. It does not show up on the APS website under Archive Policies. I was told to Google it, so I did, and it popped up with this disclaimer, quote, "We provide this for historic purposes only." This happened with no discussion with parents and other community members who wrote the policy. Regarding coaching, family and community members should be your coaches, not out-of-state consultants. If you must hire coaches, hire local ones. Third, student tests measure socialization into the dominant white culture and should not be used with our students to measure progress. Fourth, LGBTQ+ students and their families should be valued and protected. The transgender Resource Center of New Mexico and Glisten are experts and librarians are professionals. They should be treated as such and relied upon for guidance. And finally, there is no state or federal law that mandates local school districts must assist ICE in the enforcement of immigration law. APS's own policy JL2 states, quote, "Immigration officials so not be on campus at any time." We call on APS to enforce this policy, and I want to lead you with the policy from Las Cruces Publics.
Mr... Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. And I misspoke a minute ago. You're fine, Mr. Watkins, but it's one minute this evening. I'm sorry. And our second speaker tonight is Regina Dickens, and she will be on Zoom.
Thank you.
So you'll have one minute once you begin speaking.
Thank you. My name... Thank you, Board Members, for your service. My name is Regina Dickens, and I represent Grandparents for Truth, a national organization that vigorously advocates for the freedom to read and opposes censorship. My three culturally and gender diverse grandchildren attend Albuquerque Public Schools. They have greatly benefited from their school libraries and careful guidance by skilled librarians. I want them to continue to have access to a rich range of library materials that reflect their diversity and reinforces that they are valued for who they are. Indulging their curiosity develops critical thinking skills, empathy, and respect for all. Thank you for your continued support of our impressive and intelligent library teams. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is in the room. Tracy Nichols. Okay, so we're going to go to our next speaker, which is Walter Bradford. And you'll have one minute once you begin speaking. Thank you, sir.
Hello, my name is Walter Bradford, and I am a rising senior at Valley High School. I wanted to let you know about something very exciting in the new House Budget Bill for the New Mexico State Legislature. I recently helped secure an allocation for $1.25 million for AP testing, international baccalaureate testing, but primarily for students across the state to retake the PSAT their junior year. This retake of the PSAT enables them to qualify for National Merit Scholarships and matching corporate scholarships. This money can be a game changer and allow kids to be able to afford higher education. I wanted to work with you all to ensure that this money gets implemented across APS and students are able to take the PSAT again junior year. There are 13 high schools across APS, and I need your help reaching out to testing coordinators and the junior classes so they take the test this year. How can I work with you to make sure this happens? Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Bradford. Our next speaker is on Zoom. Bonnie Kavanaugh.
Hi, I am an APS school nurse and proud Fed rep for the nurses. I really appreciate all of the work that the APS School Board has been providing with showing up and having the decorum that is expected of professionals. And I appreciate that so very immensely. I want to send a shout out to my elected official representative Heather Benavides for always showing up and for always giving us your all for APS. I do want to make a comment about Monday's meeting. I think it was a fabulous opportunity for APS employees and a great kickoff with wonderful learning opportunities. I am concerned, though, that there were not opportunities for folks like myself that particular day because I'm recovering from surgery, having had surgery a week ago. And I would have liked to have seen some sort of accommodation option, please.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Desiree Spielman. Desiree, are you there?
Yes, I am here. Thank you.
You'll have one minute.
Hi. My video's not coming on. My name is Desiree Spielman, and I'm a special education teacher at Governor Bear Elementary School, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you. I have two issues I would like to speak about. The first is our outdated and often dysfunctional HVAC system. My school has one unit per two classrooms, which means I do not have controls for my swamp cooler in my room, and neither do half the staff. Another teacher has not had her swamp cooler working all week, so she's had to set up her room and conduct Meet the Teacher in a room with close to 100 degrees. And in addition, the swamp coolers breed mosquitoes, and fellow colleagues and I, and starting tomorrow, our students are being bitten by mosquitoes in our classrooms. The second issue is our lack of in-person speech therapists. My school has two teletherapists and no in-person therapists, and we have preschoolers as young as three that will only be able to access speech services virtually. And while our teletherapists are great, we all know that not all students thrive during virtual instruction, and this being the only option is doing a disservice to our students. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is in the room. Greg Mullen. You'll have one minute, sir.
Hello, my name is Greg Mullen. I'm the president and CEO of Albuquerque Computer and Electronics Recycling Company. A year and a half ago, my company was dual-awarded an RFP 24.053 for technology disposal. We were dual-awarded, and the primary difference between our business and the competitor is that we offered to do a 50/50 profit share with APS, whereas the other awardee does just a flat fee for technology assets that the school is getting rid of, like laptops, computers, and iPads and that kind of thing. To date, in a year and a half, we've gotten zero of those items from the school, while the other awardee, the out-of-state company that was dual-awarded, has gotten thousands of those items. I believe that APS is leaving hundreds of thousands of dollars, if not a million or more dollars, on the table by choosing that flat-cost out-of-state provider versus Acer, the local company here that's doing a profit-share model. You could take a look at the documentation that I provided. Additional information. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is on Zoom. Mrs. Ellen Bernstein. You'll have one minute. Oops, sorry. You'll have one minute once you begin speaking. Sorry.
That's okay. Thank you. Good evening. My name is Ellen Bernstein. I'm the president of the Albuquerque Teachers Federation. I want to take just a moment to elevate what happened here in our district on Monday, August 4. A positive district culture is characterized by an environment in which educators feel supported, valued, and empowered. Monday was just that. Yesterday, I asked all the union reps for feedback, and although it was clear that we had some glitches, they made great suggestions for next year. And I just want to underscore that they all talked about next year. People are already telling me their ideas for new sessions. Overall, the feedback I heard on Monday was reiterated yesterday. The day was positive, the PD was meaningful, useful, relevant, and the participants loved learning from their peers. A shout out to the planning team, especially Erin Harmio from EdTech for making it happen. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is on Zoom. Mr. Joe Cardillo? Cardillo?
Good evening. I'm Joe Cardillo, a resident of APS District 4. I know our board and leadership don't always hear positive feedback, so I just wanted to take a moment to thank you for your work going into a new school year. I encourage you to keep our kids at the center, seek community input, and stay transparent and open. As we get into the fall, I'm sure we'll also see some of what we've seen in the past, anti-LGBTQ+ campaigning in or around our districts. And I just want to say early and often that librarians in our schools and districts are skilled, highly-trained professionals. Their job is to ensure families have access to inclusive information. We already have a policy in process in case there are issues, and libraries do a great job of taking into account age-appropriate content guidelines. Our kids deserve to see themselves in books, and in fact, it's a lifesaver. As a kid who grew up homeschooled and had kind of a tough time acclimating to public schools, books were a lifeline for me. So I want that for all kids. I hope we all want that for all kids. Thank you to our educators, our leaders, parents, and community, and I wish everyone a strong start to the school year.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is in the room. Hold on one second. Let's... Think we're having a technical problem. I know. Okay, I think we're back. In the room, Janet Harmon. You'll have one minute.
Hi. As a parent of two recent graduates from APS, I'd like to thank the board for the community meeting last Wednesday. It was clear that there is much healing to be done. Over the decades, trust has been eroded, and the meeting was a good first step for mending this breach. Thank you, Ms. Tomeu Warito, for your heartfelt apology. And thank you, Ms. Dominguez, for always reaching out when a parent, APS staff member, or student expresses frustration. I'm concerned, though, that the board gives equal weight to parties who are not directly involved with APS. Students, teachers, staff, family members are the voices who should be centered, not business interests, charter school lobbying groups, and out-of-state think tanks. Vibrant, healthy public schools are vital for our communities at large, and these parties are welcome to express their opinion, but they should not be the guiding force. Their profit motive gets in the way of what is best for our students and school communities. I also would like to support Mr. Watkins lifting the fact that immigrant communities are... The policy is not necessarily being followed. It needs to be known within our immigrant communities at schools about this policy. Last spring, it was great, but it seems like the "know you're right" signs are down and also on the website. It's not front and center to find that policy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is in the room. Carrie Kaiser? 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 You'll have one minute once you begin speaking.
Hi, my name is Carrie Kaiser, and I have a kid in APS. He's starting fourth grade tomorrow. So I wanted to ask the board to support the work that the policy committee has been doing, and I hope that you will approve the recommendations to develop a tribal council policy and a capital outlay policy, and then also to revise the charter school policies so that those charter schools are also in alignment with APS goals. So I would urge you to please vote yes on items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3. And then, since I have 30 seconds. I also want to just speak in support of librarians and the good work that's happening in school libraries. That wasn't an opportunity I had when I was a kid. I didn't have a library that had diverse viewpoints, and it was really amazing to experience that when I finally went to a public school as a 10th grader. I think that's something our public schools do really well, is to support all kids, reflect all kids. So thank you, librarians. It's my son's favorite day of the week when he has library.
Thank you. Our next speaker is on Zoom. Jaclyn Baldwin.
Good evening, Board members. I'm Jackie Courtney Baldwin, representing Siembra Charter High School. I'm here to address the proposed policy revisions regarding charter schools. First, I want to express our sincere gratitude for APS serving as our authorizer. This partnership has been valuable, and we appreciate the district's oversight role in ensuring we meet our charter obligations and serve students effectively. Our school is thriving. We're meeting our academic goals, maintaining strong community engagement, and fulfilling the commitments outlined in our charter agreement. The current framework works well for both our school and the district. However, I have concerns about expanding district policies to govern charter operations beyond what's already established in our charter contract. Charter schools were designed with operational autonomy as a fundamental principle, not as a loophole, but as an intentional structure that allows for innovation and responsiveness to our specific school communities. We already operate under extensive accountability measures, state regulations, federal compliance requirements, financial audits, and the terms of our charter agreement with APS. I will send the rest an email. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is on Zoom. Jennifer McGrath. Jennifer, are you there?
Hello. Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am. You'll have one minute once you begin speaking.
All righty. I felt compelled to call in and say that I was shocked by the text messages that occurred recently between Board Member Heather Benavides and her, I believe, her husband, using vulgar language to talk about another board member. I think Ms. Benavides needs to be reprimanded at the least and removed from the board. Our kids... At this time, our kids need role models and leaders who can be respectful and courteous to others, even when there are disagreements, not those who stoop to bullying and divisive language. And we need authority figures who behave responsibly and realize that their words have power, but also have consequences.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is on Zoom. Lisa Davis. Lisa, you'll have one minute once you begin speaking.
Okay. Can you see me? I don't see it.
We can see you.
Oh, okay.
See you and hear you.
Thank you. Okay. Good evening. Thank you for all you do, Board members. I am an APS graduate and a parent. My family is deeply concerned about the unprofessional behavior of Mrs. Benavides and her husband Judge Joshua Sanchez, who sent vulgar messages about Mrs. Jackson. It seems like a conflict of interest for a judge and a board member to be married. They could influence decisions with confidential information. They've shown they are untrustworthy and unprofessional. Their actions raise serious questions about their character and suitability for leadership. To my knowledge, she has not even apologized, yet acts like a victim. Our family requests Ms. Benavides resign and be off the board. She has not even taken responsibility for setting this example. Furthermore, I want to address that last year, the superintendent's office chose not to appoint Ashley Kylebark, the most qualified candidate, as principal for La Cueva. This decision has contributed to decline in morale in many outstanding educators leaving APS. It appeared to be driven by professional rather than... By personal rather than professional judgment, damaging long-term success of both the school and community. I strongly encourage careful monitoring of La Cueva. I will send the rest in an email.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is online. Gail Il Stewart.
Yes, thanks. Thanks for the opportunity. I am here just to talk a little bit about the dyslexia screener that's required by state law for first-grade students. I read pretty carefully the early literacy information that's being reported on tonight to the board, as well as the questions and answers. And it's unclear to me why the first-grade dyslexia screener does not become embedded in the information. The point of the screener, while it's not to detect dyslexia, can recognize the characteristics and should lead to more intensive reading and potentially evaluation for some of the kids. Dyslexia is the most common learning disability, and specific learning disability is the most common reason kids receive special education eligibility. And the board needs to connect the dots between what is shown by the first-grade dyslexia screener and how those kids are then treated throughout first and second grade. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is on Zoom. Jennifer Pry. Jennifer, are you there?
I sure am. Can you guys see me okay?
We can. We can see and hear you. You'll have one minute once you begin speaking.
Awesome. Good evening, APS Board. I fully... I'm calling in tonight in support of the potential charter realignments and charter policy. I fully support ensuring all charters align with APS goals, guardrails, and strategic priorities. It is absolutely essential for our collective success. I do not believe revisiting this policy is necessary. I'm lucky enough to be the executive director and principal at Gilbert-Sentient Charter High School, and we were recently one of only five schools recently rechartered under APS without conditions precisely because our goals already mirrored the district's. This recharter is proof that strong alignment can be achieved within the current framework. Policy changes can consume time and resources. It may be better spent replicating what's already... And be better spent replicating what's already working. APS examples like Centa High, where independence, collaboration go hand-in-hand, producing results that advance district-wide growth and achievement. I recommend we leverage these successful models and focus our energy on scaling them through the already working charter school division's accountability model. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker is in person. Sarah Creca. Okay. We're going to move on to our next speaker is a Zoom participant, and they are joining now. Matthew, are you there?
Yes, I'm...
Okay. I think we can hear you.
Okay. May I speak?
Yeah, go ahead, sir. You have one minute.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, members of the board, my name is Matt Paul. I'm with Public Charter Schools of New Mexico. I'm also providing comment on item 6.3. You all, creating the goals that you have and committing to them is a notable act. It's something that the state is paying attention to and something that... That your commitment to is important to for the success of your students. Providing those blanket goals for charter schools that already have contracts.
And I believe we lost Mr. Paul. So he had 23 seconds left, so if he rejoins, we will ask him back. So our next speaker is Renee Pacheco. You'll have one minute, ma'am.
There are 125 plus sexually explicit books in our charter and school libraries. Do you know what porn does to young minds? A new study at Chengdu Medical College in China said it leads to neurological arousal, behavioral changes, and possibly dependency comparable to that observed in opiate addicts. These changes in the brain lead to more watching, dopamine releases, causing a built tolerance, and the child seeking to more extreme content to experience the same level of feeling. The study also said, found that frequent pornography users experienced a decreased heart rate, showed anger, sadness, higher anxiety, and depression. It also impairs cognitive function, like the ability to regulate attention and make sober judgments. We already have a problem with charter and paying attention. I'll be looking...
Thank you. And I believe we have Mr. Paul back. Mr. Paul, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay, so you still have 23 seconds. So go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for that. Your policy is duplicative of what you have in your performance framework, which dives into subgroups and student achievement. I think you'll find that charter schools are contributing positively to your goals, and I would request that you vote no on item 6.3 and work through the performance framework and your charter contracts as they come up for renewal.
All right. Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is in the room. Aurora Silva. You'll have one minute once you begin speaking.
Hello, my name is Aurora Silva, and I'm here speaking as a proud Burkinia member of a community, a teacher at APS, and attendee of Church of Good Shepherd, and the importance of ensuring our schools remain safe zones for all our students, especially immigrant students. I've heard several reports that our non-white and Latina students do not feel safe on campus. Continuing news of ICE raids here and abroad across the country have created a pervasive culture of fear and anxiety for these students, and it's led to increasing absenteeism and lowered student outcomes. Students who can't attend school or can't focus on their class... Students who can't attend school or can't focus on their classes won't reach their full potential. The big ugly bill that was passed in Washington DC over the summer has given ICE substantially more funding. We can count on seeing what we have seen in LA to happen here as well. I've also seen and heard reports that bullying and harassment against non-white and Latina students has increased, both from other students and school members. This is unacceptable and must be caused for immediate action. We owe it to these students and their families to ensure that our schools remain safe spaces. Show of concern, the community will take their concerns seriously and make sure that bullying and harassment is stamped out. We need to ensure that APS is true to its values and safe birds, everyone.
Thank you. Our next speaker is in the room, Mary Herrera.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam President and School Board Members and Superintendent. My name is Mary Herrera. I am an EA in Special Education in a severe needs classroom. I'm here to talk about children's health and wellness. Another study mentioned in the 125-plus sexually explicit books in the APS public school libraries concluded that early exposure leads to early sex, unsafe sex, sexually transmitted diseases, and multiple sexual partners. And yet another study stated that viewing porn would lead to sexual violence. These studies are not just based on viewing pornographic material, but also reading it. In these situations, children view each other as objects, lowering their self-image. In boys, it could lead to sexual harassment, either being the victim or the perpetuate. Perpetuate. These books are available in public elementary middle and high schools across New Mexico. Having this knowledge, please take these books out of our public school libraries. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is in the room, Lauren Mitchelljohn. You'll have one minute.
Hello, good evening, board. It is, I'm grateful to be able to speak this evening. I came to speak in support of the discussion around items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3 on the agenda tonight, and I'm glad to see that those are going to be under discussion. And I also wanted to talk about supporting our immigrants and really making sure that APS is enforcing the policy JL2 and the procedural directive PJ35. However, sitting in the audience, I realized that actually I need to speak up about something else and correct the record. From everything that I've heard, the issue around the unfortunate release of, you know, the internal communication between Member Benavides and her husband, was thrown into the public after having been resolved following your guys' procedures by someone on the board. And if I recall correctly, you guys actually have a policy around who's allowed to communicate with the media. This just seems very problematic to me. Secondarily, it seems like it really violates your guys' goals and guardrails. And I think it's unfair to let, to misrepresentations about what happened be circulated around the community. And I would really like to lay responsibility for this at the feet of the executive committee and the leadership on the board.
Thank you ma'am. You've been, you've got over your minute.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is on Zoom. Nina. Nina Simbana. Nina, you there?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. You have one minute once you begin speaking.
Okay, I'm a parent of an APS student. A comment made by the board president on July 16th that was made during a conversation about students with disabilities, how to better monitor their progress. The board president expressed that because the board lacks coaches, board members aren't capable of asking strategic questions that focus on particular student groups. True leadership strengthens you as team members, not limit you. And if the board president cannot inspire or equip this board to support each other in this exercise, we have much deeper issues. I truly believe that board members Dominguez, Benavides, and Tomé Wadizo genuinely center our children in every decision they make. But the divisiveness and disparaging remarks made by others have become a regular feature of board meetings and are undermining this effort. I commend the board members who ask the tough questions in order to help the district find real solutions that nourish those who want to rubber stamp progress monitoring reports to learn from their example. As we move forward with action items 6.1, 6.2, and 6.3, this community expects a genuine and thoughtful conversation. In regard to item 6.1, this board has a legal and moral responsibility to maintain a two-way government-to-government dialogue with our tribal nations. That duty should not be offloaded onto the superintendent. I ask that you respect that responsibility, act accordingly for the sake of our families, our students, and our values as a district. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is in the room, Ms. Janet Sayers. You'll have one minute ma'am.
Good evening, Madam President, Board Members, and Superintendent Blakey. My first, and I advocate for Del Norte High School and that cluster. My first suggestion is instead of the timer being this gigantic thing and the person speaking being this little tiny box, maybe we could flip it. Sometimes I, frequently I watch from home, and so on my home computer, the person speaking is like really a little tiny thing. So, I mean, we can all see the timer. Anyway, just, nothing perfect. Okay. KANW was mentioned in some news report the other day, and I was curious if that's going to have any, the decrease in funding of, at the national level is going to affect that. I did want to acknowledge that President Gonzalez was by NOAA and your award. Congratulations. And lastly, just, we had a wonderful jumpstart ninth grade at Del Norte today. And I know it helped all the ninth graders across the district to, to jumpstart. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. Our next speaker is on Zoom, Megan Long. Megan, are you there?
So.
You have one minute once you begin speaking.
Okay. Hello, board members. I am a bit unprepared tonight, but I think I'll just speak off the cuff. I think we should take the policies that are being recommended tonight under serious review, just because one that speaks the most to me is the need for tribal consultation with actual tribal leaders and not finding any other substitute for that voice. It's important to me and my children. We are part of the Yasi Martinez population, and I think that should be of the utmost importance right now. Another thing is really providing the security for our immigration, our students who are in fear of immigration and the authorities that are, who may have access on campus. And I also wanted to just have another voice of support for Heather Benavides, Board Member Heather Benavides, and for what she's going through right now, based on the actions of another board member and the leadership. And thank you. That's all.
Thank you ma'am. Our next speaker is on Zoom, Francesca Buehler.
Hi. Thank you for your time in listening to community voices tonight. My name is Francesca Buehler, and I'm a retired APS teacher, daughter of and mother to APS graduates, and proud Highland Hornet. Tonight, I would like to again voice my concern, deep concerns about the governance model that is being imposed on our school board at the direction of for-profit corporations who have a robust interest in privatizing public education while narrowly focusing on the outcomes of students. APS has been directed to focus on student outcomes as measured by our children's scores in mandated and flawed tests in reading and math. Focusing on these test scores is incredibly misleading about the beautifully diverse students that attend our schools while being profoundly harmful to our community. To gauge our students with a reading and math standardized test score ignores and erases the brilliance that all our students bring to our schools. I urge the board to consider a more visionary form of governance that focuses on our students' stories, histories, and gifts while supporting our schools and educating them. Thank you.
Thank you ma'am. And our last speaker tonight is Sarah Krecka, who ended up joining by Zoom. Sarah, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
You have one minute once you begin speaking.
Thank you, and I'm so sorry. I intended to appear in person because I think this is an important issue. I'm here as an attorney and advocate for a number of children in foster care who are also APS students. I am really concerned about Member Benavides's comments being disclosed and whether there is any type of policy as a board. If not, I encourage you to revisit your bylaws and hold each member, including Member Benavides, at a minimum to the board-designed anti-bullying and cyberbullying policy that all students and members of the school community, including employees, are held to. I actually reviewed the policy and it does not list board members because I think it is, probably goes without saying that we assume all board members would at a minimum be held to this standard that our students, employees, parents, and any other participants in the school experience for children are held to. Whether or not it was intended to be disclosed, the target of the bullying is a co-board member. I really call on this board to take this seriously. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Krecka. And board members, that concludes public forum.
Thank you, and thank you to our public forum guests. The next item on our agenda is to consider acceptance of our progress from, progress monitoring reports for interim goals 1.1 and 1.2 related to early literacy. Our presenters for this agenda item are Dr. Gabriela Duran Blakey, the superintendent, Dr. Antonio Gonzalez, the deputy superintendent, and Sherry Jett, our chief academic officer. So we will allow them to come forward.
At this time, Board President, I also want to introduce our new deputy superintendent, Dr. Mailerwine. He's joining us as of Monday, so he's working side by side with Dr. Gonzalez during this transition. So it's his first monitoring report experience that he's being mentored here. And we also have Ms. Anna Chavez with us, and she is our lead assistant superintendent for elementary school, who is leading this work for goal one moving forward.
Great. Well, welcome, Dr. Mailerwine and Ms. Chavez to the dais for this conversation. Looking forward to it. So as we said, we're monitoring goals 1.1 and 1.2. But before we begin, we do need to confirm that our monitoring report is complete. I've met with the board, with the administration and believe that all criteria for an effective report have been met, but I'll open the floor to anyone who thinks we may be missing any one of the elements. Does anyone have evidence that suggests we're missing any of the elements of an effective monitoring report? Alright, seeing none, we will proceed. Since everyone agrees that the required elements are present, we will open the floor for our monitoring conversation. As a reminder, we have asked questions that are technical or tactical in nature before tonight's meeting. Those questions and their answers are posted with the agenda materials for the public to see. Each board member is expected to ask a question during the meeting to help us collectively understand how the administration's actions align to the board's goals and guardrails. Those questions must be smart, meaning that they must be strategic, measure-focused, ask-oriented, results-driven, and time-bound. So let's get started. We'll go ahead and, why don't we go ahead and start with our virtual participants? So Member Astorga, do you want to kick us out off?
Yes, I can pull up my questions right now. Okay, thank you, team. My questions on interim goal 1.1, under next steps, you specify that there is a next step to intensify supports for English language learners and students with disabilities in first grade classrooms. And I have three questions, but my first one is, how will you ensure that ESL students are consistently receiving high-quality linguistically responsive instruction throughout the entire school year?
No. Member Astorga, we heard your question and we are preparing to answer, but the mic is not quite on, so just so you know.
There we go.
There we go. Now we're good.
Thank you for your patience. Oh, good evening, Board President Gonzalez, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Blakey. It's always our honor and privilege to have this dialogue with you around the work we do in our schools. And thank you, Board Member Astorga, for the question. And now that we've had mic difficulties, I have maybe lost track of the question, so I wonder if you could repeat it.
What strategies are you using to ensure that English learners get culturally and linguistically responsive instruction every day?
Thank you for that. I appreciate it. So I think there are several strategies that are listed and, you know, as we've been working this summer and thinking through how we've worked through our structures, I know we've mentioned at some points to the board that we are really working very closely with our assistant superintendents, who directly supervise our principals on many of the issues that we know directly relate to, particularly our Yasi Martinez and African-American students. What we want to eliminate is any gap that keeps our very best practices and professional learning from cascading into the classroom and getting to the students where it's needed most. So to that end, we're really working closely and I'm happy to welcome Ms. Chavez to the table tonight to help us answer these questions. Working really closely with our assistant superintendents as well as our departments, and really being very intentional about putting them together so that we can identify what those intentional strategies are and make sure that they are showing up in the work that we do when we're coaching specifically our principals. Because we know once our principals are getting better at identifying those strategies and coaching their teachers, then they will be able to have more of an impact in the classroom. I would say just to summarize, maybe there's been too big of a gap between our district experts and the student, and the attempt is to close that gap.
Thank you. Member Astorga, did you have a follow-up or another question?
Yes, I guess that is more of my question is, what are we doing to close that gap and make sure that throughout the year, those gaps are being closed, not just when assessment time is happening?
Madam President, Member Astorga, members of the board, Superintendent Dr. Blakey. A couple of responses to that. I think we are fortunate in this district to have our Language and Cultural Equity Department that works around offering professional development, not only to our principals, but our teachers. And there's a couple of professional development opportunities for our teachers, specific to our ELL student population that are worth mentioning. And one is the GLAD training that is offered throughout the year, multiple opportunities. We've taken, as you know, a different approach in regards to our Title III funds, and we've consolidated those funds as to allow a bigger economy of scale to offer more professional development in this area specifically for our teachers in the area of our ELD student population. So I'm happy to share that our LCE department is now facilitating these opportunities for our teacher system-wide, whether or not they are a teach, a school that is a dual-language or traditional bilingual school. So that's something that I think is worth mentioning. I also think that there's a lot of opportunity for best practices to be leveraged from our bilingual and dual-language schools in relationship to best practices, pointing to the work that was done on Monday, teachers, learning from teachers. And there's a lot to celebrate and every fall, just to mention, our district is visited by an international conference, La Cosecha, around this very topic. So a lot to celebrate in that regard, in regards to ELD instruction for our students, support to teachers, and on the development of the coaching eye of our principals.
Great, thank you. Member Astorga, were there any follow-ups to that, or do you need more information?
No, that was good. And thank you for shouting out La Cosecha, too. It's a great program. I have two more questions. Should I wait?
Let's wait and go to other board members, then we'll come back around if they're not asked by others. So we'll move to Member Tapur Amaro.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. So I have one.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everybody. So I have one, I just have one quick question. So my question is like, how specifically will the district rapidly intervene if a monitoring system detects that opportunity gaps are reopening near the year, end of the year? What is that looking like for us?
Gonzalez, thank you for that question, Board Member Tapia Romero. I really appreciate that question because I think it's pushing me a little bit at the beginning of the school year to think about that system. We are committed, particularly through our teaching and learning coaches, to data literacy in our classrooms. And one thing we know about working in early literacy is that the assessment is critical, not in the test itself, but in the information that it gives us. And we've really been talking a lot about not only how we use the interims, which we use to monitor, progress monitor our interim goals, but particularly, how do we use common formative assessment? And what does that look like across first grade, second grade in particular? So as we are working with the students, we know what the skill is they're missing and how we can immediately address that. I think to your question, the challenge for us will be to keep the momentum of that work and not let our foot off the gas pedal, if you will. You know, when we hit spring break and that is sort of setting in, like, how do we continue to use our common formatives and the information we get to directly address the immediate academic needs of the student?
And Board Member Tapia Romero, I think one of the things that I've noticed this year is that we are trying to make sure that we're aligning our system structures and support to the schools to be able to accomplish these goals. And one of the areas that we saw was a misalignment was in our 90-day plans that our schools have. So all schools have 90-day plans with goals that were not necessarily connected to the work that they're being asked to do with these goals. And so we've moved that work under the assistant superintendents, who are the closest proximity to the school principal, to create the systems and structures to be able to align those 90-day plans and the work of the 90-day plan core team, who regularly reviews the data at the school, to really make it so that they don't feel like they're monitoring too many different things, but that the systems are more aligned.
Madam President, Member Tapia Romero, members of the board, Dr. Blakey, I don't mean to belabor the response, but I think there's a systemic example of how we've already taken that into consideration for the coming year in terms of finishing the year strong with our technology collection protocols. This year, we began to collect technology early on May, which left several weeks of instruction with a critical component or tool, technology, outside of the classroom in many instances. So we know that we cannot finish until we're finished. So really thinking about adult behavior and how we build systems to ensure that instruction and the tools to facilitate strong instruction are in place from the very beginning of the school year to the end of the school year, and inventory and other collection protocols, as difficult and time-consuming as they are, are on us as the adults within the organization to figure out how to make that happen in a responsible way.
Great, thank you. Member Tapia Romero, did you have any follow-ups to that?
No, no, that was perfect. Thank you so much.
Great, thank you. Member Tomori To.
Yes, my question comes from interim goal 1.1 on page six about the summer reading program. What intentional strategies are we implementing to ensure that children with disability, English language learners, and Native American students see meaningful value and benefit from the summer reading program, particularly when these groups have historically been underserved or under-presented in participation and outcomes? And then also in relation to our immigrant students with the fear of coming to some of these programs?
Understood. Madam President, Member Tomori To, members of the board, Dr. Blakey, I'm actually very confident on our response because I'm proud of the work that we did leading up to the summer reading program. One of the things that we did as an example is we were very intentional in a very strong way to personally invite the students furthest away from opportunity to participate in this reading program. The individual invitations, who are Ayazi, Martinez, African-American students at our priority and emerging schools specifically, to really have an invitation to really help our parents know you have several options. I believe there was upward of 70, don't quote me on the number, upward of 70 summer reading program locations in the greater Albuquerque area. Public schools, I think we had 14 or 15 of them, community centers, public libraries. So we were working with these families, the families you're referencing specifically, to be invited to come to participate, because we've talked a lot about high-dose tutoring in our work before you as a board. There is not a better example of individual instruction, individual high-dose tutoring, than some of the work that went on this summer. So that's one part of the answer that we're really proud of, is the individual approach to support the students that took place. The other thing that I would say is the partnership with the city, and this is something new that we have not done in the past in regards to summer programming, is we know that the PED summer reading program was partnered with APS, but also the City of Albuquerque to run this program. So we partnered with the City of Albuquerque to offer the program, not just in our APS centers, our APS sites, but also in the community centers so that there's access to literacy, high-quality programming, and also the opportunity to attract the very students that we're working to monitor in this given goal. So a lot was learned this summer, a big step forward in regards to our Ayazi, Martinez, and African-American students in summer program. And I think you had another part to your question that escaped me.
It was about the immigrant children and those being fearful and those not wanting to leave their home. How did those programs also benefit them?
So we've done a lot of conversation, a lot of prep, a lot of communication to our school principals leading into the school year. Our Equity Department has been in very close, almost week-to-week communication with our community partners that are traditionally working with our immigrant student population, with our immigrant population in Albuquerque. So what are they hearing? What are the concerns from the immigrant community? How do we ensure that we are responsive without delay to this very important value community constituency in our school district? So that work happened throughout the summer. We had minimal concern come our way in terms of direct instances happening within summer programs or leading up to the school year. But that did not deter us from having a strong training for our principals. I believe it was last week where they received very concrete guidance in terms of interface and how-to in the instance of a agency visiting a
And when will that data be released?
The attendance data for the summer program?
And yeah.
The attendance data for the summer program should be available in the coming weeks. It will be given to our separate department for analysis and for them to do their thing. And then hopefully, we will get it to the board shortly thereafter.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Member Benavides.
Okay, you can hear me now. Thank you, President Gonzalez, and thank you all for being here this evening. So it's really great news for interim goal 1.1 that we are on track, but there is a very troubling statistic that I wanted to address on page, I believe, five of the root cause or of the presentation under root causes. As of the 120th reporting date, 31.4% of our first-grade students were chronically absent. If our students aren't in school, they can't learn, and our first graders don't have any control over this. What strategies does APS have in place or are thinking about implementing to address this? And how can we work with our families to support them?
Board Member Benavides, President Gonzalez, Dr. Blakey. Right now, what we are reviewing with our principals as far as assistant superintendents and our coaching pieces is what are our systems to address absenteeism? Not only to acknowledge who is able and has consistent attendance, but also what are our systems to address how to catch students up or how to pull students to make sure that they have a review process or opportunity to that instruction that they missed? As of right now in elementary, that might be a little bit more difficult than in our secondary schools. However, we are equipped with student success teams that will also include health and wellness teams and attendance teams to create plans, and then also to create systems, if a student has been absent, that they visit maybe a certain staff member to be able to check in, not only with social-emotional pieces, but also to work with our teachers to see what instruction was given during that time and see how we can follow up, either with interventions or making sure that the teacher has availability with that student one-on-one during times when other students are possibly in small group settings or in other pull-out programs.
Thank you. Any follow-up, Member Benavides?
Did you have a comment? I just can't help myself because I really, student success systems is really dear to my heart. So thank you, Board Member Benavides. We are, through our New Mexico Attendance Grant, actually expanding the work we do with student success systems into our elementary schools. We currently have five feeders. So when I talk about a feeder, I'm talking about the K through 12 pattern that a student might go through, elementary, middle, high school, to really hone that system so that we can remove the barriers. Because I agree, when it's an elementary student, it's, you know, they can't either get a ride to school or they can't. And so what do we need to do through our community school impact coordinators, through our student success systems to remove those barriers? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Member Dominguez.
So, thank you. So far, I mean, it's it's important that the public hear all the work that goes behind producing this report, right? And I want to recognize that certainly because we were in a position that we have to ask the hard questions. I mean, we're coached to doubt what you're saying. So I want to start with a thank you for all the hard work. But I am going to ask a technical question. I don't expect an answer, but I'm curious about, and this is on the heels of Board Member Benavides's question. I'm just curious how the Crossroads program might fit into a strategy for chronic absenteeism. And I don't expect an answer right now, but just throwing that out there. And I'll try to remember to put it in as an RFI, but
And Board Member Dominguez, we can send that to you. Dr. Salazar and his team have put together a pretty robust summary of what Crossroads will be doing. We can send that to you.
And how it fits into our first grade? Okay, great. Thank you. So my question has to do with, I'm going to go back to students with disabilities. While I recognize that the answer to the question regarding the disaggregated graph line, and I'm looking at figure four in that disaggregated information. First, for clarity, what does actual mean on these graph lines?
Actual is the the what the actual, I'm trying to not use the word to describe what the word is. Actual is what the final percentage was in, so that's the data that you see. The target is what we have as our target for the year, and then the goal is the final goal at the end of that series.
But what group are we measuring with actual? Is that like the general population?
No, actual is the subgroups that we're measuring, the Ayazi, Martinez, and
So the aggregate, is that?
Altogether.
Okay, okay. Thank you. So while I appreciate the answer to one of my questions around the kids with, or students with disabilities, and the question was, the same disaggregated graph shows children with disabilities had an increase in 2024, 25, at mid-year, but then dropped. What is the district's thoughts on these? And you all, the answer, mentioned, well, this is a temporary dip, and, you know, the overall trend is positive? Yes. However, there is also a gap developing. And in 20, so for example, in 2021 and 2022, that gap was 8.7. And then in 2022, 23, it became 9.1. In 23, 24, it became 13.4. And 24, 25, it came down a little bit to 12.1. So that concerns me. And so what are the strategies that you're developing, you have developed, to ensure that we we put a stop to? And this gets difficult, right? Because I just, I feel it's important to say this publicly. We're making strides. The overall group is improving. My concern is for the disaggregated populations, and they're usually children with disabilities, ELL, and Native Americans. And all three of them, I believe, have developed a gap. So what are the plans to address that?
Thank you, Board Member Dominguez, for the question. I agree that when we look at the populations you mentioned, we are always concerned if we're seeing those gaps growing as we're concerned with any dip in our achievement data. To that end, what's going to be really important in our 25, 26 school year is how we use that assessment data, what we know about what skills the students are missing, and how we use then our instructional practices to address that. So, and I agree, like, that's a very generalized statement, and I want to recognize that. But I feel very strongly that when we use that data to identify a very specific skill, our teachers know what to do then. And our special ed teachers are experts in pulling on strategies that work best with students, whatever their disability may be, because there isn't just one strategy for all students with disabilities. That is kind of the beauty of the IEP, if you will. The same with our ELD student, like, we have teachers who have a specific credential to teach English as a second language. And so really leaning on the expertise, but we're going to have to get narrow about what it is the student needs to learn in that moment. And then I believe the student will learn it, and the student will be able to move forward successfully.
Think in addition, there are two things that come to mind that I think we have to really work on to address that. One is just knowing that the gap is certainly of a priority for us. And when I see them, I get really worried and upset. It's also a very large segment of the population. So when we look at it, like, the number of students that are in these target populations is a really large number. But I think it's important to know that we have this intersectionality of our goals. And in Goal Four particularly, and in looking at how we see, particularly looking at a sense of belonging in our students, we see that a lot of our students in this particular subgroup are really struggling with that sense of belonging. So it might be sometimes it is addressing a strategy in the classroom, like a reading strategy for students. Sometimes it's like this core part of if we see these students particularly really Sometimes it's like this core part of if we see these students particularly really struggling in a sense of belonging, then the strategy might not be a reading strategy. It's more of a culture-building strategy in the school, in the classroom. And so I'm really like interested to see when the, when the team looks at these goals, that they actually are connected more than they're not connected. Um, and there's a lot of levers we can pull in that. The second barrier that we as administration really need to help our teachers with is on collaboration time um and planning time. Because what's happening is we know that teachers need to have the time to look at these data, to adjust their lessons. We talk a lot about the power of having small group instruction. Uh, Ms. Chavez just talked about like pulling groups very um strategically or individual students who've been absent. But the teachers need time to develop that, like daily time to, okay, so for tomorrow, I have to do this, this. And they're not getting that time to be strategic about their planning. And so you see as the year goes on, they get less and less of that time. And so their lesson planning isn't as strategic because they don't have the time to do it. So we have to really figure out these schedules on how we can give teachers what I would say is like strategy time to be able to plan their lessons for the next day to make them um very specific for each student. Because they all know, you know, that yes, they have a different group of students coming tomorrow morning in their class than they had last year. The standards are the same. Um, so that they have to have the time to be able to do the first teach with their kids, but be able to adjust along the way. They need time to really dig into what's happening through the year with different students.
Ms. Chavez, did you want to get in?
If I may add, um, board president and Dr. Blakey, thank you for bringing up uh collaboration and planning. That is something that our assistant superintendents are um also focusing on with coaching with principals. So being able to ensure that our teachers understand student accommodations, making sure that principals have created pathways and eliminated barriers to um having access to those accommodations, and they may be technical tools, uh text-to-speech type of things. Um, those are all those are all functions that help us understand what students understand. So they may not be able to show what they know in a standardized way, perhaps in a multiple choice or even a written form. But if we can utilize some of our other tools with accommodations, we will uh get a better understanding of student understanding, and then we can figure out how to fill the gaps from there.
May I have a final follow-up?
Yeah.
Um, so I'm glad that teacher time is on the radar for sure. Um, and in line with my, I have this logo on my email, and it's climbing a mountain and you're giving a hand up, right, to get to the summit. So I'm concerned about principal time also. So how, what is the mechanism for giving? And I say this because I know there are some great things happening. Uh, I mean, I was at a school today that was just phenomenal. Um, but I know you, you, you're not born principal. You, you, that, they need time. So how how does that fit into the strategy?
Board member Dominguez, St. Gonzalez, Dr. Blakey, uh, I am very proud of our assistant superintendent team. We have developed some new systems to ensure that principals will be in classrooms uh with a goal of eighty percent of their time, twenty percent on administrative time and tasks. What the eighty percent of time will look like is uh principals are walking through in non-evaluative observations, offering timely feedback to the strategies and also some of the critical actions within ninety-day plans uh that have been outlined to address um any of our goals that are in the classrooms, specifically with elementary early literacy strategies. Um, we have also secured professional development from our departments that has been organized in a year of scope and sequence that is about to be finalized and presented to principals so that they can plan out their year as well and um be able to work with their assistant superintendent on their professional development plans to build those skills that are necessary in order to provide um effective feedback and also make sure that their operation systems and their budgets are fully functional to be able to clear pathways.
Thank you. Great, thank you. Member Jackson.
Um, thank you. So my question is in relation to um uh one point one on the bottom of page nine where it talks about support of high-quality instruction through the end of the school year. And this question um has has primarily been answered, but there's a second part to it. Um, it's timely because my daughter was just asking me if we could shorten the school year um since we don't do anything the last couple of weeks anyway. So my question um in relation, specific relation to one point one is um, the original question was what specific motivational strategies or instructional adaptations are in place for students and teachers showing signs of fatigue and disengagement? I think that you have answered the instructional adaptations throughout the course of this questioning um with the um change of how the ninety-day plans are coming about, um how the lesson planning and and collaboration. But what are the motivational strategies that you all are going to use as we get to those last final weeks of school to maintain high-quality instruction, um to maintain a focus on learning? And yet balancing it with the fact that, yeah, it's the end of the year. There's a lot of parties and a lot of fun that's happening. So it's a tough task, but how are you going to do it?
I'll start. Thank you, board member Jackson. I think the answer, and again, is sitting here in August, I'm like, oh, yeah, that's going to happen. So I, I um appreciate the challenge of how will we maintain that system? As we do work through, I think a lot of it is instructional. I, and I know we've already talked a lot about instruction, but that's sort of what I talk a lot about. Um, but it is in creating those really engaging opportunities. School can still be a good time and academic in nature. And particularly, we understand the fatigue sets in. How do we help our teachers build really exciting lessons that not only the students are excited about, but the teacher is excited about too? And how do we make sure they know they have that strategy time to do that, and they have the permission? And I would even dare say the incentive to do that in order to maintain student engagement. We um we, I mean, we recognize that towards the end of the year, there are certainly a lot of things to celebrate. I would say the other thing we do is we get used to celebrating on a more regular basis as a part of our ninety-day plans, as a part of our um student achievement. So it isn't just an end-of-the-year thing. That's what we do at the end of the year. That's what we do all along.
I think the other thing is that the um the teachers and the district worked um really hard on these units of study and establishing scope and sequence. And so I think by planning for the end, like now, is really important. So um, actually, one of the breakout sessions um on Monday was a teacher showing how they did their backwards planning. And I think that that is really important. So if if we want to see like, how do you teach till the end, you start planning for the end first. And so the more that we um have the work on lesson planning with teaching with the end in mind, and then working backwards, which is backwards planning, literally. Um, I think that that helps with, okay, so it's April, and then as a teacher, you get to the point of oh, my gosh, how am I going to finish all of this by the end of May? And so we do have, you know, teachers that are like, there's no way I'm going to finish this. And that typically is when you've done like the backwards planning, that you realize there's not enough time in the year. Now, there is like the human element of kids getting tired, and after the state test, there is this um, which the team talked about a little bit in the report. There is a sense of like just burnout, like, well, we already took the test, right? So it's like the the fourth grader um version of senioritis, like, I already got into college. Why do I have to keep going to school? So a fourth grader is like, I already took the test you've been talking to me about all year. So how do we make it more that learning is for learning and the test is just like one part, but we still have more work to do until the end of May? Um, so I think that backwards planning is something that we have to really um work on.
And just to clarify, so that is a strategy, this backwards planning is a strategy that is being used district-wide or?
It's a, I'm backward.
It's a thought.
No, it's a strategy that is in like the teacher's planning. Um, we don't have a system of did you or did you not backwards plan, but I mean, I would say ninety-nine point nine percent of our teachers know about backwards planning. Um, now sticking with like, let's like really have the time, that kind of goes back to that time element too, like how right now, let's plan for the end as we approach the first day of school.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, member Jackson. Um, so I want to start by commending you and the district for this work. So it's really exciting to see that we are indeed on track in reading um and early literacy, um so something to celebrate. Um, my question is essentially related to the strategies and planned actions that show up around page six-ish on both reports. Um, so there's a lot of different strategies here, and there are a lot of different implications for the departments involved. Um, so just reading through, I know, assessment, technology, curriculum and instruction, extended learning teams, special education department, family education department, I'm sorry, family edu- family engagement um and language, culture, and equity. Um, so there's a lot of different pieces and players. And so my question is, what strategies are you using to ensure not just collaboration across departments, but real coherence? Um, in particular, to make sure that we are serving the Martinez, Yasi, and African-American students?
Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Blakey, um, I'd like to highlight the work of Chief Academic Officer as a space in response to that question. It's not necessarily captured in this report, but I, as an introductory remark to your um question, um, we've been very strategic over the last year about how we in the district use our time and how we meet and making sure we're not meeting for the sake of meeting, but really being intentional with um, when we meet, the cadence of meetings, the accountability um to the collective work. And I want to cite a specific um space in the academic cabinet meeting that um Chief Academic Officer Sheri Jett leads. And that meeting has all of the assistant superintendents, but it also has the cited departments or leads of those departments in it. And the cadence is meeting every other Monday for um a good three hours for really in-depth alignment in regards to the strategy for the work of the interim goal in relationship to the goal. And that work has really grown in its sophistication. And a lot of what you see here is a manifestation of that work in that space. So I just offer that because I think it is a, an example of how we have evolved over the last year. And quite frankly, I'm really excited about how this space is going to continue to achieve um what you imply in the question. Um, I don't know if um Chief Academic Officer Sheri has more to add to that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, we will go back around to member Astorga. You indicated you had some additional questions?
Yes, thank you. One of my questions was answered, so thank you for that. My um other question is on the line graphs by student groups for in, for interim goal one point one. And I'm looking at the disaggregated data, and it shows here that English language learners have went up for, since middle of year to end of year. And so have uh black African-American students have went up from middle of year to end of year. What I'm looking at is our Native American students and how they went down from middle of year to end of year. So my question is around how students experience assessments and wondering if all students are receiving culturally and developmentally appropriate support throughout their time during the assessment period, and if that looks different from each student group?
Thank you, board member Astorga for the question. We have identified, uh, looking at our assessment strategies and protocols as a uh way to ensure, I think, as um Ms. Chavez said, that our students can truly demonstrate what they can do. And also, we can clearly understand what they cannot do and address that. And to that end, uh, the schools will work on what that looks like for their student populations. Uh, I appreciate having the the idea that it also needs to be culturally relevant um expressed because I, I'm not sure that's something we've emphasized enough. And so how do we, among the adults in the school, truly provide that space and support for our students that is going to help particularly a first grader? Know, I'm safe here, I belong. It's okay to show what I know. It's okay to show what I don't know. Uh, those are very specific strategies that are definitely related to goal four. Um, but we have to do a better job of calling that out among the adults and identifying the adults who can be that person in the room for a child who, quite frankly, is experiencing something like assessment for probably the, you know, the first few times. That's that's a kind of a strange thing to do when you're six, um, even though we're all used to it. We also have, it's a great question and something I think we have to um pay more attention to. We have a very high, what I would consider a high number of students who say that they cannot identify an adult on campus that they feel connected to. Um, and that was very concerning data for us, and Dr. Salazar and his team have been um really working on how can we put in the structures to make sure that that is at a hundred percent. That being said, at the end of last year, I was at a school that we're just talking about in their um staff meeting. They were just like brainstorming, you know, and what they could do to to help kids in the test. And they had talked about actually having kids assign their test by which teacher they choose to test with instead of who their classroom teacher is. And I just thought, I don't know if they ever did it or not. They were just kind of talking about it at the time. Um, so it's not something that we've, we've looked at, but it is ideas like that that come from the school as far as once they find an adult they connect with. What would happen if students say, I'm choosing to be in Ms. Jett's class, and she might have, you know, fifty students signing up, and I could have two that come to my class that chose me to test with? How, what would happen if we have kids test with the adult that they feel the most connected with? Um, I think that kind of gets to what you're um asking in a way of how can we be more intentional about it and personalize it more? And I don't think as a district, um, we have developed those strategies. I think the schools are just starting to kind of talk about that.
Thank you. Uh, member Astorga, did you have any follow-up to that?
No, I just wanted to say thank you both. That's exactly what I was kind of getting at, because, you know, first grade, they're little kids. And we see going into our high school age students that the biggest correlation between testing is mental health, right, and how they don't feel prepared mentally or emotionally to take tests, especially if they're high stakes. So starting young and being able to find that person that you trust or develop a, a space inside of the school or that where they feel, okay, I can take this test and not have a fear of failing or a fear of asking questions is very important. So thank you both for, for those strategies.
Thank you. Um, so member Astorga had indicated that she had additional questions. Um, so if others have additional questions, uh, actually, I'm so sorry, top your emerald, go to you because you're remote. Did you have additional questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So I'll go ahead and open up the floor to others. Are there other additional questions? Okay, member Tomori.
Uh, this is off the uh accommodations and the um goal-oriented piece. Um, because I do have some concerns with the amount of time kids are on the computer, especially kids with disabilities. So I just want to know, how about the ti- uh, how, how are the amount and type of computer time provided to children with disabilities aligned with their lit- literacy focus accommodations and individualized goals? And to what extent does this alignment support their reading and writing development? And furthermore, um, are accommodations implemented based on a generalized checklist? Or are they tailored to the specific nature and need of the children, the student's disability?
Thank you, board member Tomori. Uh, I'm going to get us started, and then I'm going to ask um for, I think, probably uh Ms. Chavez and Dr. Gonzalez to jump in. I do want to let you know that we are also, we share the concern about screen time. And we know um from a lot of research and pediatric studies that we should limit screen time among children. Um, and that does include, you know, like we'd all begins to add up when we're doing academic screen time. To that end, our, um, Executive Director of Education Resources has begun a draft and research on what would be best practices and guidelines in our classrooms for all students around the use of screens. That's in development, we want to make sure we're sticking very closely to the literature on that. Um, but as we think about, I think there may be issues of equity here, there may be, um, we want to make sure we're using our digital tools responsibly and to the best of our abilities, particularly for our younger, uh, students. So that is forthcoming and something that we share a concern about.
Madam President, Member Tomorito, members of the board, Dr. Blakely. What I would add to that in regards to accommodations, specific accommodations to students, the latter part of your question is it's a, it's a call to action, if you will, in terms of the continued training and professional development of the IEP team. What does a head teacher do on a campus? What is their role? How do we support, not taking away the autonomy of the IEP team or the individual nature of what each team is called to do, but how do we equip our, um, head teachers and our sponsor teachers to be able to know the latest supports in regards to the research? In regards to screen time? In regards to, um, the supports that, um, our educational resources and teaching and learning department have? So that the dots are connected? Because that will ensure that we are able to equip them with the power of information so that the best accommodation is put in place for the students based on the individualistic nature of their IEP.
Board Member Tomorito, um, Board President and Dr. Blakely, uh, I also want to elevate the work that the executive directors within our teaching and learning department are, um, focused on with their grade level, um, resource teachers, uh, and their ability to work directly with schools and provide different strategies that can offer a wide range of opportunity for students to show what they know. We also recognize that digital, um, instruction is just one piece, one way where we can have students apply what they know. But we also, uh, are looking and leaning into hands-on experiences, real-world experiences, um, opportunities through our genius hours. Um, those are all additional moments in time where the standards of understanding or comprehension can be transferred and applied as well as demonstrated. So, uh, I really want to make sure that we all have that understanding and remembrance that we have a team of grade-level experts who are working directly with teachers and helping facilitate some of those lesson planning strategies to ensure that there is a balance.
Great, thank you, uh, Member Tomorito, was there any follow-up?
I was just going to say there's no checklist.
Thank you, are there any additional questions?
I have additional questions.
Member Dominguez.
And that was perfect segue, your answers as well to, to one of the strategic questions that I submitted but didn't get answered. So here it is. Um, what research, who are you reading, who's guiding, what thinkers are guiding the district's current approach? To uh, assessment, but also supporting students toward better outcomes. Especially, and I'm focused on, on the, the three groups that show this increasing gap. And they are, uh, again, students with disabilities, uh, English language learners and Native Americans. And I also need to point out that we hit it, you all hit it out of the ballpark with, um, African-Americans. I mean, they, they're above our goal, they're at twenty-seven point nine, they ended the year that way, uh, first graders did. Well above the twenty-three percent. So I think it's important to recognize that we, we're making headway and it's just spotty right now. So back to the research question.
I, um, I would say that, you know, that's an interesting question because I think, um, as the team comes together, everyone has, um, kind of read or researched different elements of utilizing data or what works in subgroups in various pa- it's one of the reasons that I really wanted to put together, a diverse team of thinkers in the leadership level because not everybody went through the same administration program, not everybody read the exact same books, not everybody, um, is studying the same thing. Everybody comes together with these different types of knowledge that I think pushes on each other in different ways. And so, um, I, I think that that's a, it, it's an interesting question, but like as a district, we haven't said, like, everybody's reading this book as this research, but you'll see kind of in the report, we'll say, we will, um, reference different types of, um, literature that we have used in, you know, developing the answer or something that the group came together to look at as a white paper perhaps, or a book that everybody says, oh, I read that too, I remember that. Um, but as a whole, it's not committed to one specific, um, book or researcher that we're using.
Okay, so I, I understand that. But there are key researchers and key thinkers, particularly around, um, that impact, for example, Native Americans. And I'm, I'm hoping to get the name of the book from a, um, the Executive Director of Indian Education at Sandia Pueblo. Um, but, so I, likewise, I think there are key researchers that we rely on for ELL, right? Um, and, and I guess I'm looking for
Yes.
The sense of.
A hundred percent, like if I were to, if somebody were to ask me, like where I came from to say that this is what's going to work with ELL students, I may say, well, Dr. Crashen has done a lot of research that has guided me in what I think we should do to work best. But somebody else could say, well, I just read this book by somebody else who's, so I, that's why it's an end, it never ends. Right? We have to continuously learn to do better, to do different. So I can't say, well, I stopped reading in two thousand twelve, because there might be a book on our show. I might have a book right now that I'm reading about different strategies of how to, um, address something I see that's important. And Ms. Jet might be reading a different book. So it's just that we're not all, we're all open to continue learning and continue trying and to continue reading. As a leadership team, there's not one specific like book that we're using at the same time.
No, correct, I, I get it. I mean, it's research and so you're going to have a bibliography of, 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 um, thinkers that guide you. But I'm hoping I'm not going to hear B.F. Skinner. Because that just doesn't work with our kids who need relational, curricula or pedagogy. And I'm sorry, but I am a teacher and so that I'm, I'm, I guess, uh, but I'm going to share it with you, the, the name of the book. The American Indian Mind in the Linear World. And that's Donald Fixico. And I, you know, when, when I hear a language teacher who is Native American, direct me toward a book, I'm, I'm going to pay attention. And so, uh, again, just curious, but I'm going to move on to another question. And you provided great details uh, in, in the answer regarding the strategies and planned action, uh, regarding the summer reading program. So I, I, I appreciate you reiterating them in public. Um, but I, I'm curious about the answer, uh, to, to this question. And the question was, how were the three lowest performing groups, children with disabilities, English language learners and Native American students specifically targeted and monitored during the summer program? And in the answer, you mentioned the greatest, um, let's see, the, uh, to identify students demonstrating the greatest literacy needs, uh, an analysis of K through five academic performance trends from I-ready and I-station with language learners. But you also brought in panorama to inform literacy assessment. And could, could you speak to that a little bit more, please?
Madam President, Member Dominguez, members of the board, Dr. Blakely. Um, so earlier, when I was alluding to the strategy that was used to individually invite the students to participate in the summer lea- learning, the summer reading program, it was, um, basically what you're reading here in terms of, um, who are the students that really we need to encourage to participate in our reading program? Open, obviously, to all of our students and there was opportunity for students citywide. Um, but what was the intentional approach that was used to ensure that, um, an individual touch, if you will, was made to support, um, students and parents in being made aware of the summer program? Um, so these measures were used in terms of which of our priority in emerging schools? I mean, really focusing on those, looking at the, um, I-station data in regards to which students could really, um, didn't meet the mark in terms of their, um, goal one measure? And also, um, which students could benefit from the perseverance characteristic, the sense of belonging and these different pieces? So there was multiple measures that were used to, um, give us a better picture of who we should really target and support because we knew this was a really unique opportunity funded to the Public Education Department to offer, um, high dosage tutoring in literacy to our students. And we wanted to make sure that the students that we are collectively working to support in this goal were really, um, encouraged to participate in the program.
Okay, so it's not like panorama is producing something for you to, to use?
Aside from the data, no.
Okay. Um, and I think I think we, I've covered all my questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Dominguez, are there any other questions from the board? All right, thank you, Board members, for this productive conversation. Now we must vote on whether or not we will accept the monitoring report. As a point of clarity, we are voting to accept this report as a formal acknowledgement that we have had a satisfactory conversation with the superintendent and her team and that we have a deeper understanding of how the current reality for students is lined up with our community's vision for them. In order to accept the report, we must be able, we must be able to answer yes to the following three questions. Does the reality of this report meet our vision for the goal? Is there growth towards that vision? Is there a strategy and plan sufficient to cause growth toward that vision? If the answer to all three is yes, then the board can accept the monitoring report confident that data is accurate and the superintendent is performing. Is the, does anyone have evidence that those questions should be a no versus a yes?
No.
All right, so we're good with the yes. At this point then, we're ready to entertain a motion to accept this monitoring report.
I move we accept the progress monitoring reports for interim goals one point one and one point two, early literacy. This is Member Jackson.
Thank you, do we have a second?
A second, this is Member Benavides.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Vanelle Astorga?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Heather Benavides?
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero?
Yes.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Daniel Gonzalez?
Yes, thank you and thank you to the team. Our next item is to consider recommending the development of a new tribal consultation policy. For this agenda item, our presenter is Josefina Dominguez, our Policy Chair.
Thank you, uh, Board President Gonzalez. Let me grab my things here and, uh, maybe. So as Policy Chair, I'm proposing to the full board that the APS board approve the policy committee develop a board governance policy on tribal consultation. The purpose of the policy would be to formally establish a board-level governance policy on tribal consultation that honors tribal sovereignty, complies with federal law and aligns with the APS board's commitment to equity, inclusion and student outcomes, particularly for Native American students and their families. The reason it matters, New Mexico is home to twenty-three sovereign tribal nations. The Navajo Nation, nineteen sovereign pueblos, the Hicaria, Mezcalero Apache Nations and the Fort Sill Apache Tribe. APS serves a significant population of Native American students, including many with disabilities. The Martinez-Yasi court decision and our court and our board goals prioritize historically underserved students requiring more than just a symbolic support. A governance policy distinguishes strategic leader, leadership from administrative actions and ensures that consultation is not merely performative, but instead meaningful, timely and effective. There are legal and ethical, uh, obligations. The Every Student Success Act, section eighty-five thirty-eight, requires local education agencies or aliays and boards are, school boards are specifically cited as aliays to engage informal consultation with tribes before adopting policies or submitting plans that affect Native students. Executive Order one three one seven five and the twenty-two, twenty-three uniform standards for tribal consultation reinforce the requirement for government-to-government engagement at the highest levels of authority. Recent federal guidance stresses that tribal leaders expect consultation with elected boards and senior officials, not only administrative staff. There are current gaps in the APS policy. The APS board has passed resolutions regarding Indigenous student outcomes without fully adhering to tribal consultation requirements. We did so in November of twenty-twenty-three and I voted for it out of sheer ignorance. Thanks to Board Member Tomorito's vigilance and guidance, I realize that I had an obligation to correct that error as Policy Chair. No current policy, uh, governance policy exists to ensure proper consultation before adopting resolutions, MOUs or other major decisions affecting Native students. The absence of a formal policy creates legal, ethical and equity vulnerabilities. So my proposed action is that, um, I recommend to the, I recommend that the policy committee develop a policy for the APS Governance Manual for the Board of Education, committing the board to formal consultation with Navajo Nation, the nineteen pueblos and Apache Nations, as well as urban Indigenous leaders. Collaboration with APS Indian Education Parent Committee as required by law. Ensuring board-level approval of policies and agreements that impact Native students happen only after such consultation has occurred. Further, I further propose, um, well, actually, I'm not going to propose this. I'll let this become initiated later. An added, uh, benefit to having this tribal consultation An added benefit to having this tribal consultation governance policy is that we would get strategic alignment. APS has as priority the Martinez-Yasi compliance. The policy would impact centering equity for Native American students. One of our prior, another priority is equity and cultural responsiveness. The impact of the policy would prevent tokenism respecting sovereignty. A third priority is governance leadership. The impact of a policy would be to set a statewide example in ethical, effective tribal consultation. Our other priority is legal compliance. The impact of such a policy would align APS with the ESSA 8538, which I mentioned earlier, and the Executive Order 13175. And so on a final note, I will say this policy is not only a legal requirement, but a moral imperative and a clear signal that the APS board is committed to equity, authentic community and family voice, and government-to-government partnership with the sovereign nations of New Mexico. So that is my case for such a policy.
Great. Thank you, Member Dominguez, for the presentation. Do we have a motion and, and second, to consider recommending the development of a new tribal consultation policy?
I motion that we recommend the development of a new tribal consultation policy, and this is Board Member Benavides.
I will second. This is Board Member Astorga.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, so we will open it up to discussion. Is there any comments, questions, or additional discussion? Member Jackson?
Thank you. Um, this question is, I think, probably better indicated for our administration experts. I'm just wondering if PED or any of the tribes that we are consulting with have given us any feedback on changing or refining our tribal consultation policy?
Um, we will have Ms. Campos, our Chief of Equity, come and answer. She has been in contact, um, following our policy meeting to get some more clarification.
So President Gonzalez, members of the board, Member Jackson, Superintendent Blakey, thank you. Good evening. Uh, so yes, so just kind of a reminder. So under our Equity Group, uh, Indian Education is part of our team. And right now with, uh, we're looking for a Senior Directive in Indian Education. I am taking on that role personally. So not only as part of, as my role as Chief of Equity, but specifically as serving as the, uh, role with Indian Education, I've been.
Ms. Campos, can, yes, thank you.
I've been in the past since January, much more connected to our NMPD, Indian Education Division, particularly Assistant Secretary Juanico. So I know Assistant Secretary Juanico has been working on developing a shared definition of what tribal consultation is. And particularly after the Government-to-Government Summit NMPD had with our tribal nations in June, uh, her and her team are, really went and are more directly working with our tribal leaders in developing that shared definition. Uh, that is still a work in progress. They are still working on that, and my understanding from the Assistant Secretary is they are finalizing that. That also includes other dynamics of that shared definition, including, uh, what that would look like for school board representation as well. So we are waiting to hear back from them. Uh, but I am very pleased to hear how NMPD, NMPED is working directly. This is not something just from NMPDE, but Secretary Juanico is really working in collaboration with our tribal leaders in developing that shared definition. Uh, and then again, they will provide that to us and then give us recommendations on how to move forward.
Um, just a follow-up. Um, I guess if PED is working already on this guidance and the shared definition and working with tribal leaders, would you recommend that we move forward with changes to our tribal consultation policy or that we wait for the guidance from PED?
I, my recommendation would be to wait, particularly because this recommendation, like I said, it is coming from NMPDE, but it's coming with direct consultation with our tribal leaders. So I would like to hear what our tribal leaders are offering in terms of that shared definition and, um, and in true spirit of tribal consultation, uh, what their recommendations are moving forward. I think we're all in agreement that we absolutely, um, not just APS, but the state itself, we really do need to look at tribal consultation. We need to make that much more on authentic and real practice. It shouldn't be just once a semester, but how do we really incorporate a true, authentic process? And I believe that is what the, the, the discussion is about. So not only just the formality piece, but giving recommendations to us as school districts and how to make that even just more than formality piece, coming from our tribal nations themselves.
Great. Thank you. And then I believe, uh, the, there was a two-parter to Member Jackson's question, was whether you'd heard anything from PED and tribes related to this potential policy? Is that correct?
Yes.
Um, and I think you answered the PED part. So has the district heard anything? Well, I'll let you reframe.
Yeah, has the, have you heard any, any feedback from tribal leaders as far as the need for an, or expansion, change, um, adjustment to the policy that we already have? And we have, we have a policy already. So have you heard anything requesting from the tribal leaders?
What I've consistently heard, uh, throughout this year and also in previous years, just from our tribal leaders, is again, just having more opportunities to have much more authentic tribal consultation. Uh, I don't think we've gotten to the point, kind of like the nitty-gritty about what that means, uh, in terms of a policy or specifics. Uh, and I think that's where we need to go now, is to really get into kind of the, the meat of it on there. I think, again, it's kind of been very surface level. Everyone agreeing we need to have better consultation, but what does that actually mean? And really also getting that really direct feedback from our tribal leaders, uh, asking them directly, what does that actually mean? Like, what do you actually want to see in this? Uh, I don't think we've been there yet. So, uh, I would really like to have that opportunity this year to really get at the heart of that with our tribal leaders, again, in consultation with NMPED.
Great. Thank you. Um, other questions?
If I may, Board President?
Yep, Member Astorga.
Yeah, I think this is a very important conversation, especially from my district, knowing that I have East Leda Pueblo as part of my constituency. And I also just wanted to remind the board that this conversation is really so that we can vote in favor or against the board, the policy committee, having these discussions in which Ms. Campos had just said, right? So understanding what PED is saying, understand what tribal, um, government is saying about wanting tribal consultation within APS. So I think it is necessary for the policy committee to continue those conversations and what that looks like. It's not necessarily saying that we're building a whole new policy that is going to be without those conversations. But I think this specific meeting today is to discuss allowing the policy committee to do that work and understand what tribal leaders need from APS and how we can accommodate, if needed, anything, right? I know one of the biggest concerns for, that I'm hearing, um, is how can we get a bus stop at East Leda Pueblo so our students can stop leaving APS and going to Los Lunes or, um, other districts? So, um, yeah, I just wanted to point that out and just state that it's super important that we have these conversations and not just in a discussion on this, on the dais, but also in those committees. So we have more time to talk about what is coming from PED and, and the information that Ms. Campos is giving us.
Thank you, Member Astorga. Um, are there other questions or comments?
I have a comment.
Yes, Member Tomorito.
I think, um, I don't want to think, but we are at a great juncture right now, especially if PED is, is also providing the question and also wanting to listen to tribes. I also think that APS could also join in on those conversations, because I think that we stand at a good place to be a leader in this. And I think that if we truly take this opportunity, not only to listen to tribal leaders, but I also think in negotiation piece with PD at the table and even with us as board members, it would be very helpful to not only address the concerns, but I think it's also a great point within the state of New Mexico to be standalones to make this happen. Uh, because everybody looks at us and then they follow through. So I think we're at a great opportunity, and thank you for your words and for really listening. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Tomorito. Other questions or comments?
I just want to clarify something.
Oh, I had a question. Okay. And then I'll go to your clarification. Um, so it, it, so what I'm hearing from you is PED is currently in the process of revising their guidance overall, which will include definition of tribal consultation. And your direct answer is that if it were up to you, essentially, you would wait on this policy until that guidance comes out, because we don't know what it's going to be. Um, and so my question is, what do we know about the timeframe of that guidance from PED?
President Gonzalez, Member of the Board, Superintendent Blakey, my last conversation with Assistant Secretary Juanico was, I believe, about a week and a half ago, and her communication was finalizing. So I don't want to speak for the Assistant Secretary, but saying finalizing. And in other meetings I've been at in the past month, it sounds like, it sounds like they're going to probably get us something in the fall.
Okay.
On this. I know she is really wanting to move forward on this. Uh, this is something that's very passionate for her as well, is to really have this authentic, uh, consultation. Uh, and I'm really excited, like, uh, Board Member Tomorito said, I think we're at a really good juncture right now. We have a really good relationship with the Indian Ed Division of PED. We're all on the same wavelength, I guess, if you want to say that. And to really be making some good movement on what we're looking at in terms of authentic representation and not just the formality pieces, but how do we really have those, uh, really, uh, personal discussions with our tribal leaders? And not just our tribal leaders, but another kind of, uh, recommendations I think getting from the community is understanding, you know, like, for instance, a pueblo governor, he's very, he or she, I should say that, is very busy. And a lot of times, you know, it's a very formal role. So our opportunity to meet with that position is somewhat limited. However, their education director, other members of their pueblo who are really doing the day-to-day work, making sure that those relationships are really tight and solid and having very clear communication. That is one thing I've noticed in the past six months, uh, overseeing Indian education, is again, I think our, our staff and our educators are coming from the heart. But I have staff who are in contact with so-and-so from a certain tribe and so-and-so from a certain tribe. And I saw that this summer, uh, connection with some of our teachers, which is phenomenal. But our teachers are off contract this summer. So they were emailing them, and they're not particularly looking at their emails. So again, how do we get very clear communication where my goal is to have, when a tribe contacts APS, particularly Indian Education, we get that information, uh, right away, and we're able to answer them right away on there?
Great. Thank you. Uh, Member Dominguez, you were going to make a clarifying comment?
Yes. So I appreciate everything you've said, and, and I want to clarify that that you speak from an administrative point of view. What I'm discussing here is a governance policy that distinguishes strategic leadership and consultation from administrative action. Um, and I want, and the, the language that comes up over and over and over again, from the time I started researching this a year ago in January. So that was 2024. Uh, and I spoke with, um, I'm going to forget his name. The last name was Gutierrez, um, from the U.S. Department of Education. The, the language is consultation is not merely performative. It is meaningful, timely, and effective. And it must begin with the policymakers. The Board of Education is that body. And whether or not our tribal leaders, um, understand that yet, I think, uh, my impression when we spoke with Assistant Secretary of, uh, Indian Education, Juanico, that was part of her work. Uh, and she mentioned and remind, um, correct me if I'm wrong, um, Board Member Tomorito, but she was shooting for mid-September, because I think there is a, um, an assessment, uh, that is due from the districts. And she was trying to, um, to put out language or guidance before, had to do, I'm getting this wrong, certification. Um, at any rate, she was shooting for mid-September. So I would argue that this is the prime time to, um, begin those conversations in a policy committee. I mean, we'll still have to check in with, um, with Assistant Secretary of Indian Education, Juanico.
Thank you, Member Dominguez. Uh, any additional comments or questions? Member Jackson?
Okay, so I'm, I'm trying to put this into a flowchart here. Um, because what I, what I'm kind of hearing is some board members have talked to Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Secretary Juanico. You have talked to Assistant Secretary Juanico. I'm going to assume that Superintendent Blakey has also talked to Superintendent Juanico. And what this is potentially, and what I think this is highlighting is that we have a governance manual that outlines a process as to how policies are developed for, for the board and the district. My concern is that if you are having conversations, and you are having conversations, and you are having conversations, and then I have conversations, we're all hearing different things. And there's a reason that we have given this function to the administration, to the superintendent. There, this is an administrative issue. It's the district, it's the school district that is the local education agency. They are the ones who are supposed to be having centralized conversations with the tribal leaders that they can then bring back to us. There is a, there is a govern, there's a policy in our governance manual that it's the superintendent's responsibility to let us know as a board when a policy needs to be developed in relation to potential changes in statutes or regulations that come from the state. So my question, whoever wants to answer it, Ms. Campos or Superintendent Blakey, is if we don't have guidance yet from NMPED as far as a regulation or a potential statute, does it make sense for us to create a policy when we don't have, um, when we don't have guidance yet? Um, additionally, we don't have, from what I understand, we don't yet quite have tribal, um, request for this from a centralized place.
Correct. So I would say that, um, it's important to note that, as Ms. Campos said, PED is working with the tribes to, um, create these guidelines that then will come to the school districts. So, um, I would just caution, um, the board on creating policy without tribal consultation. Um, what could happen with this particular case in talking to Assistant Secretary and to Ms. Campos is we could very soon, it sounded like possibly, probably September, um, receive guidance from the New Mexico Public Education Department based on their tribal consultation of, um, coming up with the guidelines. They could direct us to then create policies that we need to change or establish to meet what the new guidelines are. Um, I believe the Assistant Secretary did mention that she want, they, there was a desire to include more. I believe the Assistant Secretary did mention that she want, they, there was a desire to include more board in the tribal consultation, so I suspect that that will be part of the guidance. We would then, according to the governance manual, bring it to the policy committee to then develop or redevelop our current policies based on the guidelines we get in the very near future.
Thank you. So it's coming, we, something's coming, but it might just make more sense right now. It's not to stop the conversation, it's not to, it, it's just to maybe pause the conversation until we have guidance from an MPED who has been in consultation with the tribes, tribal leaders.
So Board Member Jackson, yes. Also too, one recommendation that Assistant Secretary Juanico just gave a general recommendation, not just for APS but overall for districts, is if we do have current processes, that we can just start kind of looking at those and just seeing, kind of brainstorming and looking and seeing what those look like. Are there areas that we want to start, like are kind of more of concern or pockets? So she did recommend looking at current processes we already have in place as a good proactive measure while we're waiting.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments?
I have a clarifying question.
Yes, Member Benavides.
So I just want to clarify the process. So if we, if this motion passes this evening, then the policy committee has the responsibility to create this policy and then it comes back to the Board for final approval. Okay.
Any additional comments or questions?
President Gonzalez, can you hear me?
Oh, yes. Member Tapia Romero. Go ahead, you have the floor.
Thank you. I, I, I guess after hearing this conversation, what has me concerned now is even hearing the feedback from Superintendent Blakey, like I feel like we are not we're not setting ourselves up at the right time. I understand the intent, but I feel like there's still a lot of missing pieces to this and we need to ensure that we're aligned with PED before we move forward with this. So I guess not necessarily a question, but more of a comment.
Thank you, Member Tapia Romero. I was going to add my comment that this isn't a commentary on the importance of tribal consultation or the importance of engagement with our native communities, but rather a process issue. And so part of the purpose of student outcomes focused governance as we went through the trainings was to put in the focus on the goals and the guardrails so that individual board members do not try to move policies specific to their each individual agenda. And so the thing that I worry about is the slippery slope of that. I think we all agree that tribal consultation is important, but if it's not aligned to directives that are coming from the state or from the superintendent, then that is board members just advancing our agenda. At any other time, an individual board member may decide, I want to do a policy on this, that, or the other. And we're right back in the same place where we established a process, right back in the same place, period. Whereas we had established a process for making sure that our policy had an actual flow coming directly from the superintendent. So I do have concern about that. And I think just to echo some of the comments that have been made, I have significant concerns about advancing this, given what I've heard directly from the administrative staff, that it would not be helpful to do so right now. So that's my comment on the issue. And then I think we can go ahead and proceed to vote. So Dr. Albright, if we can have a roll call, please, vote.
De Nella Starga?
I vote yes, and just wanted to also throw in that the, part of the purpose of tribal consultation is to foster relationship buildings and engagement with our other communities. And that's one of the big things that we heard on last week in our, in our community training, community workshop is we're not being active listeners to our communities. So just fostering relationships and trust, and I feel like this is a good way to start that.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
I vote yes, but I also have a comment to President Gonzalez, this isn't a personal agenda. And it's a historical, you know, it's been a great concern for many Native American families and communities because the historical factor of the government in itself has not, has mistreated so many tribes. And the lack of, not, and just as, as a board member, Historga said, this is about relationship building. And it is not a personal agenda. And I would hope that down the line, that you see it differently. Because just being Native American on this board, I'm, I'm offended by that comment. And frankly, I will say yes to this. And I, and I'm hoping that we do move forward and that this is an open door for those who have been silenced for centuries. And I hope this changes. Thank you.
Tabi Belamita?
I vote yes. And I think we have an excellent opportunity. It's going to come back to the Board for a vote and then we can discuss it then. But this is a great opportunity to be the leader in the state to, to do this important work. Yes.
Chris Tapia Romero?
No, it's not the right time.
Josefina Dominguez?
Yes, this is precisely the time, well overdue.
Courtney Jackson?
Um, no, I think we need to wait for guidance from an MPED before creating the policy.
Daniel Gonzalez?
No. Okay, so the motion carries and our next item is to consider policy recommending to, consider recommending the development of a new capital outlay policy. Again, our presenter is Josefina Dominguez, Policy Chair.
So capital outlay decisions, investments in facilities, buildings and infrastructure are among the most permanent and expensive decisions this Board makes. These decisions shape student learning environments, impact equity and influence community trust. An issue that was raised at, was it last Wednesday, Thursday? Feels like a century ago. But it's been an issue since first semester and, and it's, I'm not interested in rehashing old decisions. But I want to learn and reflect on previous decisions and how we proceed better. Currently, there's no governance policy that ties capital outlay approvals directly to our adopted and new Board goals and guardrails. With that, without that connection, we risk misaligning long-term capital investments with our academic mission and equity commitments as they are currently, and I want to stress, as they are currently stated. And with the current progress monitoring report data. Capital outlay employees, I want to stress, work hard toward equitable distribution of resources. Nonetheless, we have faltered in this area and we need to address community trust. So in alignment with our Board goals, Goals 1 and 2, early literacy and math proficiency, capital investments must prioritize facilities that improve learning conditions for historically underserved students. Perhaps even, and I say perhaps because it would have to be discussed in policy committee, perhaps looking at the new alignments along priority and emerging schools. They would modernize campuses, upgrade classrooms and provide equitable access to technology infrastructure and be strategically directed to schools with the greatest instructional needs. Again, priority and emerging schools. Goal 3, post-secondary readiness, to expand dual credit participation and career certification. Capital planning must intentionally fund CTE spaces, dual credit classrooms and transportation solutions aligned with our current realities as we learn from our progress monitoring reports. This ensures disengaged student populations are not left out of the post-secondary pathways. With regard to skills, habits and mindsets, a new policy would, would ensure safe, inclusive and engaging learning spaces such as wellness centers, collaborative hubs and outdoor areas, essential for fostering the mindsets we want in our students guided by current data. Capital outlay decisions must support these environments, especially for Martinez-Yasi targeted populations and our most disengaged students. Reinforcing guardrails through capital planning would benefit the district and the Board. With the district securing 9.6 million for student supports, I may have that number wrong through the, the recent work of, with the city. The Board must ensure that facilities and programs can deliver mental health and community-based services equitably. And this is under Guardrail 1, wraparound supports. A governance policy ensures capital funds meet actual student needs and not convenience or political pressures. Guardrail 2, equity and resource allocation. While APS strives for equity, capital dollars risk being influenced by political clout or the loudest stakeholders. I think this is just the reality forever. A policy ensures funds are distributed based on objective need, facility condition, instructional priorities and student demographics, not on influence or tradition. The commitment to transparency will strengthen community trust. Guardrail 4, community engagement. Communities historically excluded from district planning must have a real voice in capital decisions. And I'm thinking in particular, the Capital Master Plan Committee, which is still a mystery to me. I don't know who the members are. A governance policy can codify expectations for inclusive and authentic engagement in capital planning processes. And finally, Guardrail 5, staff support and voice. Learning conditions are teaching conditions. Facilities directly affect staff morale, recruitment and instructional quality. A governance policy ensures that educator input on working conditions is central to capital spending decisions. And so the why of this policy, why the policy matters, capital outlay decisions have long-lasting impacts on equity instruction and community trust. This is at the heart of what we do as a governance team. So the governance policy would align capital spending with the district's academic goals and guardrails based on progress monitoring reports, ensure transparency and fairness in how decisions are made, again, based on real-time progress monitoring reports, center decisions on students, families, neighborhoods and staff, not politics or convenience, and ensure public dollars are spent not just to build facilities, but to invest in student success and most importantly, in community, neighborhood wellbeing. So I urge to the Board to prioritize developing a capital outlay governance policy that will safeguard APS's values of equity, transparency and student-centered decision-making and puts community and families first.
Thank you, Member Dominguez, for your presentation. Do we have a motion and a second to consider recommending the development of a new capital outlay policy?
I would like to make a motion that we recommend the development of a new capital outlay policy. Board Member Benavitas?
I will second Board Member Tomori To.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, so we will open it up to discussion. Are there any questions?
Member Jackson? Maybe not necessarily a question, just a comment that we already have a budget policy that outlines a lot of, I think, what you just read to us, Board Member Dominguez. Specifically, the budget development part of the policy. Well, first of all, it talks about that that the Board will approve a budget that honors the community's vision and values and complies with all local, state, federal laws, rules and regulations. And then when it gets to the budget development section, it does talk about how the superintendent and the staff will present updates to the, as the budget is developed, particularly about timeline, legislative analysis, enrollment, staffing levels and salary projections, revenues and costs, inflationary factors, any significant issues related to changes or items of concerns, budget projections and forecasts. And I think most crucially, which is, I think, the point that you're getting at, is evidence of how resource allocation aligns with the Board's goals and guardrails and the district's strategic plan. It then goes on to say that the superintendent will share the community's budgetary priorities with the Board based on input that is gathered in a variety of ways through in-person, virtual hearings and surveys, as well as community engagement events. I added that myself. It also talks about the Board's fourth guardrail, requiring the inclusion of parent, legal guardian, student and community voice and engagement in school and district operations. So I, I think, I mean, I can keep reading, but we do have this budget policy here that addresses these concerns that I think that you are bringing up. It, I've already said that part. I'm also concerned that creating a new capital outlay policy that is a Board policy would cross over into management and take us out of oversight, especially because capital outlay implementation, including timeline strategies, is an execution, it's an administration and it belongs with the superintendent. If we also look at the budget policy, if you look in the budget management section, we already have oversight on major capital expenditures based on the fact that the Board has to approve all proposed district purchases and expenditures that exceed or are expected to exceed $500,000. So we already have, we already maintain or hold on to that authority through the budget policy. We also have a finance committee already that provides ongoing oversight. They meet every month to review the, the capital planning, to review the outlays, to review the budget. And we all have the opportunity to attend those finance committee meetings, even if we are not dedicated members of that committee. So we do have the opportunity to provide recommendations. And then like I previously said, we are already embedding the student outcome focus into our budgeting process. If you look at the budgeting approach, budgeting approach section, it does say, in support of the Board's goals, the budget will allocate resources to schools based on community grounded definition of student needs. So I think that while I understand your, does your concern, your desire to have this policy, I would respectfully say that we already have a policy that, that is in place, that addresses the concerns that you have put forth.
Thank you, Member Jackson. Other questions or comments? I had a question and I think this is for Member, no, maybe it's for the superintendent, I'm not sure, or Member Dominguez. So in your overview, overview, you mentioned capital outlay employees. And I just wanted to understand what's a capital outlay employee?
So capital, I think it's important to, capital outlay is a funding source. It's not, it's a source of money we get from capital funds that then is, so capital outlay is a funding source. We don't have capital outlay employees necessarily. We do have people within the Finance Department that are employees that oversee the capital outlay funds. And I think we have maybe five.
Okay.
And they are within finance.
Thank you for that clarification. And then my second question, I think relates a little bit to what you said, because I am a little confused. So capital outlay is a funding source. And then my second question, I think relates a little bit to what you said, uh, because I am a little confused. So capital outlay is a funding source. Um, do we typically have policies related to specific funding sources? Or are there other policies related to specific funding sources?
No, all of the funding sources are within the budget policies. And so overall, the board does have authority over the budget. So if you recall during the budget process, Ms. Abadok and her team will show like that pie of funds. And so there is a part of that pie that are the capital outlay funds that come through the budget that you see. We also have, any capital outlay funds that are expended do come through the finance committee for approval. All capital outlay funds go through the, the finance committee.
And then I guess my last question is somewhat similar to the previous agenda item in terms of whether from your perspective, this policy is needed. Because again, our governance manual dictates that policy recommendations should come from the superintendent and the administration. And since this is not, I would like for you just to weigh in as to whether you think this policy is needed.
I think as a capital outlay policy, I'm having a hard time understanding like a policy on a specific line item of the budget. So I think that through the budget policies we currently have, that that matches. Now, what I've heard in Ms. Dominguez talking is more maybe questions or concerns about the capital master plan, which is a separate kind of conversation and a pretty robust way of looking at the facilities as a whole. And so, but as, I do not think that there is a capital outlay fund policy that would be necessary with outside of the budget and the finance committee.
Thank you. Um, so are there any other final questions or comments?
I just have a question coming off of this discussion that was just had from Member Dominguez. Is there a distinction that you would like to make between capital outlay versus capital master plan policy?
Well, the capital master plan is impacted by capital outlay funding. And so I think that the issues I raised, does that answer your question before I clarify more?
Yes.
So the issues I raised have gotten lost in the existing model and process. And governance policy, which is our responsibility as a board, links us directly to community and families and neighborhoods. And I think that's the piece that needs to be lifted up. And it's hard to lift that up for consideration when financed, in a finance committee, given the structure of it at, at the moment. So for example, our finance committee, we, we meet for 15 to 30 minutes. And yes, we have an opportunity to, to go over the packet. But there is no discussion about the umbrella, the values and the visions driving capital outlay funds during a finance committee. So that's what I'm trying to lift for consideration here.
Uh, Member Jackson, yes.
So I think just, but just a point of clarification here is that capital outlay funds come from legislators. They're line itemed. And those are separate from the funding of the capital master plan. Right?
Yes. So we do get capital out, so every year, um, schools request specific capital outlay funds to their legislators for projects needed at their school. So that capital outlay comes in the forms of play structures, intercom systems, a lot of the vestibules. There, um, really, this, the school has quite a bit of autonomy in requesting those funds. Those are the capital outlay funds that we request every year from legislators that then come to individual schools from the specific pot of money that each legislator gets.
Sorry, so may I? Member Jackson, yes.
So then, if those are capital outlay funds that are requested by the schools, then the schools and the communities that they serve, in theory, they're the ones that are kind of driving, like they, they identified the need for their individual schools and communities and then can request those capital outlay funds from their legislators?
Yeah, so we kind of guide it a little bit because we do the projects based on it. So I think, you know, the district kind of says, here's like three or four things, which one is your school needing? And then the government affairs team basically goes to lobby for those. They are not always funded. Several of them aren't, several of them are. Uh, but yes, it's pretty driven by the school based on the different items that the district gives as items that can be requested. Lots of, yeah, shade structures, intercom, you'll see them, they do come across through the finance committee as well.
I have a question, if I may.
Yes, Member Astorga.
Just going off of this discussion, Superintendent Blakey, we had some funding that was requested last year for the Festival de las Artes that we did not end up getting from legislature because of, I guess, allocation differences. Would this come from the capital outlay?
That, I can send that in a RFI request. That was capital funds that were requested through a different, they were capital funds, not requested to the district. So that's, that was tied up in a different space, but I can, I, we can send you the information on, on those specific funds.
Yes. Yeah, I know that it was a junior bill. Um, I was just wondering if it would still be around that same, like?
Correct. It is capital funds. It was just a different entity that requested it. But yes, those are capital funds.
And Member Dominguez, I know that you're familiar with what happened with that allocation as well. Would this policy help situations like that where we would be able to have more authority around where that funding or how to receive that funding?
That wouldn't necessarily because it was a different entity and it went through the Department of Finance. So that specific would not be fixed through this, uh, policy. I think that was a city issue, isn't it?
Yeah, we were moving from APS to the city, I believe, on that allocation.
It's not on the agenda, so I don't want to get too in the weeds of it, but I'm happy to send you the, the information on it.
No, I was just using it as an example for my own understanding of if we do have a policy around capital outlay, what exactly our authority would be as the board member in, as a board member in Member Dominguez's eyes of, you know, our responsibility. Oh, I don't know if that question made sense and.
Thank you, Member Astorga. Uh, Member Dominguez, did you want to respond to that?
Uh, yes. So a, a governance policy, as I see it, is to articulate and align, well, to articulate the vision and the values that we have translated into goals and guardrails. And so we would want to align and honor the goals and the guardrails very directly to capital outlay funds and how they are spent. And I think, I, I can't say it anymore clearly enough or succinctly. Where, that's not happening in a finance committee because it's such a big topic. And again, the capital outlay funds are among the most permanent and expensive decisions. And that, but you know, key questions about, there are lots of key questions that have come up, and I've submitted RFI requests on that, on specifics. But what has come to my attention as a board member is that this is a big pot of money. And our goals and guardrails need to be aligned with that big pot of money.
Thank you, Member Dominguez. Uh, just a follow-up. Would you say that if we revised the budget policy that Member Jackson brought up, considering that it has a lot of the information that you want on the capital outlay policy, to say something like, in finance committee meetings, we will allocate a certain amount of time for capital outlay conversations? Would that be something that would kind of be the same as like an outlet, capital outlay policy? I'm just trying to figure out what the difference is, I guess, between this budget policy that we currently have compared to a new policy? And if we can revise it in order to fit your, the needs of this conversation?
I think that would be something we'd talk about in a policy committee if, if we moved forward with a conversation on developing or, let's see, what does it say here? Yeah, I, I think that could happen in, as part of the conversation.
Thank you. Um, I had a clarifying question, uh, which maybe again is for Superintendent Blakey. Member Dominguez, you just referred to capital outlay as a lot of money, and it's something that requires more border oversight. And so Superintendent Blakey, can you contextualize for us how much is a lot of money or is it a lot of money? Or what, what is the scope that we're talking about here?
We can get that money, or we can get, we can get that amount and send it to you. Each legislator gets, I'm just looking at Joseph and Daniel too, $1 million, thank you, um, to distribute among their area, the states, wherever they choose. So capital outlay is a, it's a small segment because some schools don't get any capital outlay money. Um, but we have had years when we've had generous capital outlay. Senator Lopez gave a million dollars to Rio Grande High School for construction. But usually, these are projects that are $10,000, $20,000 a school. It's a pretty small, it's, it's a small amount per school of little projects that the schools request of capital outlay money. And I, I don't know off the top of my head, but you figure each, each legislator gets a little pot of money that, and some give them and some don't to different schools.
Thank you for the clarification. That was my understanding also. Um, and I guess I'm wondering if maybe there's some conflation of capital outlay funds versus funding that pays for capital projects?
Capital projects are funded through bond. Um, that is a much larger amount of money, and that comes through, um, as we just did, as the bond package. So you all have seen how much, um, we put forward through those. So those are, that is for capital projects and that's bond money.
Thank you. Um, any additional questions or comments on this one?
Board President, I just have one last comment.
Benavides.
Thank you. So, uh, Member Dominguez, I just want to understand that what you are seeking from the board is approval to work with the policy committee to research this topic, create a policy, put in hours of research, answer all of your questions and all of the questions that have been asked up here on the dais, especially the ones where there seems to be confusion. Create a policy and then bring it back to the board for final approval. That's what's happening here.
Yes, but.
Okay, okay. So you're asking us to give you permission to do a lot of homework? And create a policy that may not end up being approved anyway? And I, and I'm not saying that in the way that, to discourage you. I just want everybody to know that there's still another level that this policy that is, needs to go through. Okay, so.
And I have a, a, a question, a clarifying question. So before we had our policy, or I'm sorry, our committee diet, and I'm going to refer to it as a diet because we did have two committees that we got rid of. One was capital outlay committee. And under that, we talked about capital projects, capital master plan. Um, and so I'm, I'm confused why capital outlay doesn't include capital projects, which were included under that committee.
I, I can't answer that just because I don't know how that committee was, um, named necessarily, but I can find out and get back to you on it. But I don't, I don't know how that, um, capital projects, um, capital money, cap, so capital can be used in different ways. So, but capital outlay specifically is the funding source. And I don't recall, um, in those meetings, though I could be wrong, but I think Mr. Wijin Jay is on because he would know more of how those worked. I don't recall the board approving the capital outlay projects that went to legislators. Now, the capital, um, master plan and the bond does currently include, um, connection to the goals and guardrails. Separate than the capital outlay money, but capital projects and the bond package that we reviewed with everyone has how we align the capital master plan to the current goals in the current bond package.
So what's the umbrella term for all of this? Because when there was a capital outlay committee, it seemed that, I mean, it led us to believe that capital outlay was the umbrella term for projects, bonds, um, and very directly capital outlay funding from elected officials.
I would say maybe a term would be capital, just in general, that would include everything?
And I, and I.
That would include the capital master plan.
And my point is this, I mean, it's still, it's, it's a, it's a pot of money. And I think it's important for that pot of money to have, to have, to be aligned to the goals and guardrails uh, in a very significant way, uh, that gets lost in finance committee or under any current structure that we have. So yes, to, um, Board Member Benavides's suggestion, uh, but these are the things that we would hash out and figure out.
Thank you. Member Jackson, you had a question?
What? No, I was just, um, I was just gonna, um, when we were with the, the capital outlay, when we went through the policy diet, when we got rid of, remember, we got rid of those two that you mentioned? It was because when, when we were having that discussion, there was the acknowledgement that um, it was the, it was the operational versus the governance role that each side played. And there was an acknowledgement at the time that it is the district and the superintendent who have the, the deep finance knowledge, the budgetary knowledge, that they are the ones who, who sit, who make those decisions and then bring it to us so long as, for approval, so long as they are in alignment with our goals and our guardrails and the visions and values so that we, we don't lose out on our ability to, um, to influence as far as um, community input. But it was the acknowledgement that the expertise for capital, I mean, even tonight, there's capital outlay, there's bonds, you know, it, that was the acknowledgement that that was where they have the expertise and that we have the expertise with the vision and the values. So that's why that whole policy diet, that committee went away.
Correct.
And, and.
Members, just sorry, Member Dominguez. So we've all had opportunity to make several comments and questions, and I worry that we're getting back around to just making our case. Um, and so I'd like to suggest we move to vote if that's okay, since we have a motion and a second and we've deliberated?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you for that. Um, so we do have a motion and a second. So Dr. Albright. So Dr. Albright, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Ina Lestorga?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Heather Benavides?
Yes.
Cristo Tapia Romero? Josepina Dominguez?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
No.
Daniel Gonzalez?
No. So the motion carries, and we will move on to our next item, which is to consider recommending the revision to the charter school policy. For this, our presenter again is Josepina Dominguez, our Policy Chair.
So our board has adopted clear goals and guardrails to serve all APS students equitably. Yet, district-approved charter schools, though publicly funded and under APS's umbrella, currently operate without a consistent governance policy tying them to these goals. And while I appreciate some of the concerns that were voiced during public forum, all that is, would be taken into account. The gap, this gap weakens oversight, fragments accountability, and risks inequity for students across our system. So regarding early literacy and math proficiency, APS has explicit targets to improve outcomes for historically underserved students. The, the problem is that we have had charter school renewals come before us, and we haven't had consistent or accurate data. And this is something that has come up in conversations with charter school, but they're not called principals, 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 for lack of a better word. Without a governance policy, charters are not uniformly accountable for student progress in literacy and math, nor are they supported by the district that authorizes them to provide accurate data. And I think that is critical. We need aligned expectations for instruction, assessments, and interventions to ensure every student benefits, whether in traditional school or a charter. This requires an agreement between APS and the charters we approve, and specifically their governance councils, their, I think that's correct. Post-secondary readiness, charters must contribute to district-wide goals for graduation readiness. A governance policy would ensure they track and report an AP IB participation, possibly bilingual seals, possibly industry certifications, and social emotional skills. I think what I'm after more above, above all, is a conversation with governance councils, especially because we are the authorizers. And let me remind everyone, the charter schools that are with us, they have an option to be authorized by the PEC. But if they're going to be in relationship with APS, it's got to matter. And I, I don't think it has to be an adversarial relationship, but it does have to be a relationship directly with the, the school board and the governance councils. This would guarantee that every APS student is prepared for life beyond high school, regardless of the school model. We would be committed to reinforcing the guardrails for an equitable and coherent system. Special education, bilingual services, mental health supports, these must be equitably provided in charters. We know that children with disabilities oftentimes are recruited in and then pushed out. And that's an issue that's got to be addressed very directly with governance councils. A policy would close gaps and prevent disparities from growing unchecked. Curriculum quality and cultural responsiveness, guardrail three, would allow APS to set by standards for culturally and linguistically relevant instruction that, again, I understand we're in the middle of contracts. All this gets discussed, which we don't even do now. It would be discussed and negotiated. Charters must adhere to some level of expectations for curriculum rigor and alignment. And again, if we are going to authorize them, there's got to be an agreement about how we are going to support them. And at a time that we are rightsizing and repurposing traditional neighborhood schools, we have to ask the question, do we have the capacity for supporting 30-plus charter schools? Staff support and, oh, family and community engagement, transparency and authentic community and family engagement should be non-negotiable. A governance policy ensures charters uphold APS standards for family voice and public accessibility. Staff support and voice, staff working conditions, professional development, and inclusive decision-making in charters must reflect district values and labor standards. Codifying these expectations protects staff and enhances student success. So in conclusion, the case for the policy is such. Without a governance framework, district-authorized charters operate in a gray zone. There's too much ambiguity every time charter schools come before the board for authorization. I feel personally like I'm rubber stamping, and I'm not getting accurate data. And that's not only unfair to the board, it's unfair to the charters. The lack of clarity, I'm sorry, without a governance framework, district-authorized charters operate in a gray zone, as do we, publicly funded but inconsistently accountable. This lack of clarity weakens coherence in how we serve students, particularly Martinez and Yasi. We need charters, and we need to work together with charters to develop a plan to adequately, or, or share, share the responsibility for Martinez-Yasi children, rather than creating exclusivity. And we risk widening inequities. Without a lack, or with this lack of clarity undermines APS's responsibility to all students in its jurisdiction. A clear, enforceable governance policy will ensure transparency, accountability, alignment, and above all, collaboration with those schools that come to us for authorization, so that every APS student in every school is supported, challenged, and prepared for success. I do not see this request as an us and them. I, I respect many, not all charters are equal. We have some incredible charter schools helping us with Martinez-Yasi kids, with kids that get kicked out of APS, and they do an admirable job. They're just not, they struggle with enrollment issues. And so how do we come up with a plan that benefits all students but is responsible from an APS board perspective? And also a governance council on the charter side?
Thank you, Member Dominguez, for your presentation. Do we have a motion and a second to consider recommending the revision to the charter school policy?
I move that we consider recommending a revision to the charter school policy. This is Board Member Benavides.
I will second. This is Board Member Astorga.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second, so we will open it up to deliberation. Are there any questions? Member Jackson?
Um, my question might be for Superintendent Blakey, it might also be for Mr. Escobedo. I am very worried that we're about to get ourselves sued, that we do not have the legal authority to unilaterally impose district-specific requirements upon charter schools. Maybe that's a comment, maybe that's a question, but if either one of you can comment on that, I'm very concerned that we're about to overstep our legal authority on charter schools.
I'll have Dr. Escobedo come up.
Good evening, Board President, and Board Member Jackson and Superintendent Blakey. I think this is on. That is, my concern is that we would be overstepping our bounds and crossing state statute, also going against national standards of authorizing. I think part of what I would like to say to you is that what was described of what we need to do in the outreach is exactly what our team does, our schools.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Member Benavides?
Yes, thank you, President Gonzalez. I just want to clarify, is it illegal to just explore revisions? Is that against state statute or federal law?
To provide revisions-
No, no, just to explore revisions. Is that illegal?
Board President and Member Benavides, in general terms, no.
In this case, for, for the charter schools. And I, and I know in general terms, no. But, but you did say that you're concerned that we might be, but it's not illegal to just think about revisions, to, to propose them. It, it still has to come back to the board to be approved, but it's not illegal to just explore the, the option. And I'm not for or against, I just want to be clear about that.
Board Member Benavides, I would agree with you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have one concern, and again, we can talk about this in policy committee, but if we're imposing our goals and guardrails on charter schools, I would also want to be equitable and make sure that EPS is providing adequate resources and systems for those charter schools to be able to be held at those higher standards. And that will also potentially take from our funds, that we are already kind of, you know, not in the best moment with that, especially with federal funding, right? So I want to just say that and have that simmer as we're having these discussions, is if we're going to do something like this, that, that it has to be equitably thought out, which means systems, resources, funding, whatever that looks like.
Thank you, Member Astorga. Other questions from the board? Member Jackson?
Okay, so just a couple of things. So this was, this was discussed in policy committee, and it came out of policy committee. And that exact same concern of, I think, I think if we go down this route, we are going to find that we are going to be sued. We're still here, we're having this conversation. There's a potential it's going to go back to policy. It is still going to stand that if we try to overstep our authority within the statutory obligation, statutory framework of the state, then we are, we're, we're playing whack-a-mole. We're playing, well, let's move it, let's move it here, let's move it there. I, I think we just need to have, and I want us, a forthright conversation right now to say, we cannot impose our district-specific requirements upon charter schools. Now, are there ways that we can potentially work that in? Are there, is there a way through contract language? Is there a way through performance framework language? Is that something that we are already doing that, that potentially is addressing the concern that is being put forth right now?
And, uh, Board President Gonzalez and Board Member Jackson, we are doing that work right now. And so when we, when we work with our schools, whether they are currently under their performance framework with the current goals and that are matching or exceeding some of the, you know, some schools are pushing their goals further than five percentage points over five years, as an example. We are asking them to break down all of their subgroups and to make those projections themselves. And we're pushing on having those semester conversations about where they're seeing successes and where they're seeing, you know, concerns. And so I think part of what we're talking about here is really being done by our office already. And I think it's happened in a natural way, that the, the schools have embraced it and really have seen that the goals that you all have set, they want to meet, they can meet them, you know, they want to strive to that, to have the ability for our entire community to rise together.
Thank you, Dr. Escobedo. I have a question, and it is, is APS currently fulfilling its legal obligation related to charter authorization?
Uh, Board President Gonzalez, wholeheartedly.
And then my second question, I think will be for both the administration and Member Dominguez. Member Dominguez, in your overview, I heard frequent reference to inaccurate data. And so can you just clarify for me, what is the inaccurate data that you believe you've been presented with?
So let me ask the question, do, do we have charters on our SAPR, on our dashboard?
Uh, Board Member Gonzalez and Board Member Dominguez, yes, we pulled data from SAPR. We pulled data from various sources. We did have a couple of theirs in our data report last year, and we have already repaired those reports to have triple, quadruple eyes on them. So I'm confident that the data concerns have been rectified, and we are aware of it.
So I hear reports directly from charters that they would prefer to be more aligned. Somehow, they have their own reporting system. Is that correct?
Board President Gonzalez and Board Member Dominguez, yes, they are responsible for their own data. So we do not require our systems to pull and do their data. So some of the data is available on SAPR for charter schools, but it is what's available consistently for all schools. So sometimes they'll have a cycle assessment data that isn't connected to our systems where our traditional schools are, if that makes sense.
And so what's the impact there? What, what are some of the challenges? That, because I'm, I'm, I'm getting reports that there are challenges.
Board Member Gonzalez and Board Member Dominguez, I think that's part of the coaching in them being independent, autonomous schools, and really trying to figure out how they pull data, how they look at that data. We're trying to coach them through it as much as we can, but it is their responsibility, being independent.
I, I, okay, so I understand your point about their independence. But we as, we as an authorizer have an obligation to ensure that, that they are going to function, that without those challenges somehow, some way, because it impacts their reporting to us. We are symbiotically, symbiotically connected. And I don't, I guess I don't understand why we started in 2023 an effort to collaborate with the governance councils. And we did that one summer, May or June, I forget, and then that stopped. I think it's important that we have some kind of policy and process understanding that governance councils have got to be in touch with the Board of Education, governance to governance. That is missing right now, and I think there's even a desire for that.
Member Dominguez, thank you for your case making. Are there additional questions for Dr. Escobedo, for the administration, or related to this agenda item?
I have a quick comment just on what was being said, because I have also heard the same concerns that Member Dominguez brought up about data and wanting to continue conversations with APS board and the governing councils, and potentially providing similar goals with like graduation requirements and different things like that. So I would love a further discussion with Dr. Escobedo and the board regarding charter schools on that end, and how we can partner, just quickly- and how we can partner. Just quickly wanting to shout that out, that I have heard similar concerns.
Great. Thank you, Member Astorga. If there are no additional questions, we can go ahead and move to a vote. So Dr. Albright, can we have a roll call vote, please?
Janelle Astorga?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Heather Benavides?
I want to be clear that my vote isn't a commentary on charter schools. It's a yes for the committee to have the option to revise the policy and bring it back to the board to defend and promote, and the board has final approval. So yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero? Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
No.
Anya Gonzalez?
No. So the motion carries, and we will move on to our next item, which is to consider approval of the consent agenda. So do we have a motion and a second for items 7.1 through 7.8?
I move we approve the consent agenda for items 7.1 through 7.8. This is Member Jackson.
And I will second, this is Board Member Benavides.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. Can we have a roll call vote, please?
Janelle Astorga?
Yes.
Ronaldo Tomorito?
Yes.
Heather Benavides?
Yes.
Crystal Tapia Romero? Josefina Dominguez?
Yes.
Courtney Jackson?
Yes.
Anya Gonzalez?
Yes. So we will move on to our next item, which is discussion items, Agenda Item 8.1, a report from the Student Voice Ad Hoc Committee and a recommendation. So our presenter for this one is the Chair of the Student Voice Ad Hoc Committee, Member Astorga.
Thank you, Board President. I will keep this pretty quick because I know it's getting late. I and Member Gonzalez were on the Student Voice Ad Hoc Committee, and what we were really focused on is student voice on the board. So what we did was created an application for students who were interested in helping us understand what students would like to see on the board compared, considering student voice. So we sent out some applications and we picked an intern who was helping us really roll out what the opinions of students was and how they wanted to be represented on the board. So as you all got your support document, and it's on Diligent, if you haven't read it yet, is some ways that we could engage youth in board work. So one of the biggest ones and most popular ones that we've heard in community and from students is having a student representative on the school board itself. And there was different conversations of whether the student position would have voting authority. So there could be more conversations on what that looks like. Some other ways to engage students on board work were student advisory councils, and these were specialized issues. So one of the biggest ones that came up was mental health that we heard. And I know that more things like school safety and gun violence were also really big with their students. We had student town halls and forums, which is also, I want to shout out President Gonzalez for having her town hall as a student town hall to get more information from students about how they felt in their schools and our goals and guardrails. We also had student-focused reports or presentations, so similar to our progress monitoring and conversations that we've had of community members of they don't know how to access information or what's going on on board work, tailoring it to students so that they can find information if they wanted to or having it with less language and, you know, more fun, I would say, for students. And also incorporating student feedback in policy development. So again, if we had a student representative on the board, they would be able to also represent in committees. Some of the impacts of student representatives would be to amplify student voice, inform policy changes, and build leadership development. And then there's also a recommendation from our intern Amara that states that her opinion is to have a student advisory council on the board, so much like our superintendent has super SAC where students come and express concerns or things that they want supported more to the superintendent. We would have the same on a board level and doing that for a year. And then from those students who participated in that student advisory council, there would be two students that are elected to represent on the boat, on the board. And her recommendation is for students who are elected to have voting power on the school board. So I know this would constitute some policy changes and some more conversation, but that is what our intern recommend, recommended and what the Student Voice Ad Hoc also recommends. And, and again, we have our specialized advisory council topic. The number one was mental health for students and making sure that they can bring concerns to the board and have real conversations about what it's like for students inside of schools and what supports they might need that they're not getting already from some of the district programs that we have in place. Or maybe ways that we can, you know, talk about coming together to amplify some of those resources that are already in place. So this is a step one in some of this conversation of how to get more student voice on the board. But I wanted to recommend those ideas to you all. And I also just wanted to point out that I asked for a continuation of the Student Voice Ad Hoc Committee to President Gonzalez on a specific goal of engaging students and community on the topic of gun violence in our communities because of the losses that we've had throughout the years. So, yes, a quick summary.
Thank you, Member Astorga, for your work on the Ad Hoc Committee and also for the summary. And so we'll go ahead and open it up to discussion, questions, and feedback on that recommendation. So is there any of that from any members of the board?
Just a quick comment, I think that this is wonderful work, and that's what we're here for, that's what I'm here for. It's all about the students, and I know safety is a real issue right now. And whatever we can do to offer a environment of psychological safety, physical safety conducive to learning, student outcomes will improve. So thank you.
Thank you, Member Benavides. Other comments or questions? Yes, Member Dominguez?
So I like the idea of having student voice on the school board. And I'm just wondering if we might have a buffer year before they actually get a vote so that we get a chance to to hear from them and work out, I mean, it's a, it's a big job. And, and providing support so that they can be their best board representation. It's, I know these are just ideas right now, but I'm throwing out that idea as a possibility. And I'm referring to it as a buffer year, a learning and reflective year. But I, yes, I, I do like, it's intriguing. And, and absolutely, I think student voice is important.
I just want to say that yes, that's exactly what the plan would be, is to first have students involved with the process of being on a board and learning and being part of that quote-unquote advisory council for board members so that they can kind of use it as a leadership pipeline. So though after they have time with us on that advisory council, those who are interested in running to be the, the representative for the students on the board would have that also, that experience of what it's like to run a campaign, be elected, and do all of that from student body.
Nice.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Member Tomorito?
Janelle, thank you for this work. I think, I know last year when we heard from the students, the panel that came before us, you know, they did speak about incidences and other things that we as a board did not think about or have any relationship to. So this is very vital as we move forward. I think as all the adults in education, we often forget that we are serving students and children who have no voting matter in decision-making. So I feel this is going to be a great opportunity to not only listen, but also to really balance out our education system to where children do have a voice. So thank you for this, and I'm really, I'm really grateful for all the work you did.
Thank you, Member Tomorito. Other questions or comments?
I just wanted to shout out my member with me, President Gonzalez, because it was a lot of, a lot of work that she did on her end too. So thank you so much for helping me with my leave and everything going on.
Of course, thank you. So I just wanted to take the opportunity to sort of summarize then. We have a recommendation from the Ad Hoc Committee that we move forward with establishing essentially not a super SAC, but a board SAC, some sort of student advisory group that advises the board. And they would do that for a year or so, and then during that process, we would also explore how we might be able to add a voting student member. So that's the first recommendation, which I'm hearing general support and enthusiasm from the board for. The other piece of the recommendation was this concept of sort of topical advisory councils. And so Member Astorga did raise the issue of, the top issue that came up for the students was mental health. And there's also significant need for student voice and engagement around safety, particularly safety with firearms in our community. And so, and just want to put to the board as we think, and to the superintendent too, as we think about engaging further in this effort, we'll continue to have the, the Ad Hoc Committee meet and continue to process and figure out how we do this work. But when it comes to, and I guess my question for board members is, do we want to move forward with both? This process we're having, sort of, I'm going to keep calling it the board SAC for lack of another better word, but a board student advisory commission, and they are helping us figure out student voice on the board. And then do we also want to have the topical student advisory council? And if so, are we doing that on mental health or school safety? So the floor, sorry, the floor is open to feedback to those questions. Member Dominguez?
So what, I, I say we go right back to students and ask them what topic.
Well, that's what this comes from, is their topic was mental health, their primary topic was mental health. Member Astorga is suggesting that given recent events, we might want to consider gun violence as a topic.
I would say that we go with what students are directing us to to honor the spirit of, of the ad hoc.
Yes, Member Jackson?
So I just have a quick question. Yes, I think absolutely, let's move forward with the first half. My question is on the second half with having a board SAC. How is that different than the information that the superintendent is receiving from her super SAC? Like, would we be getting different information? Are we getting similar information? I mean, how, how is it supposed to be different?
So I'll let Member Astorga answer as well or fill in if I miss anything. Based on the research of the interns that we've had, this would be a separate body of students that exists just to provide feedback to the board. So a complement to the super SAC, but a different board SAC. So there's been no other details or conversations in terms of what that looks like. How many students? How often do they meet? Where do they come from? How do they get nominated? None of that stuff. So I think that's the stuff that the committee would need to go forward and figure out. I think the other question that seems implicit, implicit in your question is this issue around duplication of effort and also capacity. And so if we were to set up an additional advisory council, who's responsible for managing that? We certainly don't want to create extra work for the staff. And so if there was an additional advisory council set up, we'd have to figure that out. The third option is it could be, just be the super SAC who then engages and provides advice to the board as well. Or it could be a subset of the super SAC, but the details weren't at all addressed yet.
So maybe one thing that needs to be still flushed out on that second part is that there is also, as we've been talking about, there is that implicit difference between what the board work does and what the superintendent does. And any board student advisors would, would need to be trained, brought up to date on what board work is versus what superintendent work is. So just something to flex.
If I may, that's exactly what the advisory council would be, is the students who are interested in serving on the board as a student representative. So they're kind of getting that like introduction to board work, what does that look like? And then helping bring some of the student voice that is connected to board work to that advisory committee. So yeah, you're kind of right on it.
So I'm hearing, again, support for this concept of this board student advisory council. And then also, I think, nodding in agreement that if we do a topical student advisory council, it should focus on mental health.
Good question. Why can't we combine the two? Why does it have to be just one or the other? And that's probably, maybe that's a dumb question, it's not obvious to me, but.
I mean, I mean, I know it's. Yeah, we certainly could, and that's up for conversation as well. I, I think part of it was about the scope. So if, if it were related to mental health, that would be more in line with administrative work. And so we would be hearing from students around what are the priorities or issues, concerns related to mental health. But largely that falls under the superintendent's purview, same with gun violence. And so it would be opportunity for us to hear from students, but we don't have as much direct responsibility in action versus developing the super SAC, I'm sorry, board SAC that would be more focused on just board responsibility in action. So we can also, since we'll continue the work of the committee, explore that question. Member Astorga, should this board SAC that'll meet for a year also provide feedback on the topical question? So we can consider that. I think the other thing is that we can also recommend to the superintendent that the super SAC address or consider mental health and then, I don't know, maybe a report back to the board or something. Do people feel strongly about any of that or just are comfortable delegating back to the committee to collaborate with the superintendent and staff on the next recommendations?
Second one?
Good. Comfortable delegating back to the committee?
Yes.
All right. Great. Thank you, and thank you, Member Astorga, for the work and for the presentation. We'll move on now to the next discussion item, which is Agenda Item 8.2, an update from the Community Engagement Ad Hoc Committee on the State of the District event. And for this one, our presenter is Member Jackson, the Chair of that Ad Hoc Committee.
Thank you. Okay, so I'll make this short and sweet since school starts tomorrow. And the State of the District address is going to be held on Tuesday, August 26, from 9:00 to 10:30 at Bernafacio. We are not going to have any sort of engagement breakfast beforehand. We're going to go straight into the address. We are going to have, we will have the very robust student involvement. We will have student MCs, we have a band performing for us as the students get there, a student performance of the National Anthem. Then we will go into remarks by our Board President that will focus primarily on the APS goals and guardrails and maybe a little State of the Board address. Then we're going to move to guest remarks by Dr. Michael Richards, the Executive Vice President of UNM Health Sciences. He is, the, the way that it was described is that he is our target student. He is somebody who started as, as one of our students and has obviously gone on to, to great things. So he has a great story to tell. Then we'll move to a video presentation and then into Dr. Blakey's speech about the State of the District. After that, in order to kind of keep it a little bit more interactive, we will move to a fireside chat with Superintendent Blakey and Board President Gonzalez, in which they will be taking questions from two more students, one who is a middle schooler and one is a high schooler. So that will be kind of interactive, then we will close. And again, we'll have student, student musicians throughout, student MCs and just students everywhere for this. So what we are asking of the board members is to, once again, please contact your organizations, people that you know, people that, community involvement, make sure that they know when the event is. Again, Tuesday, August 26, from 9:00 to 10:30. We would love to have a lot of, of people in attendance. Noah, if you want to run a full-page ad in the journal, that would be awesome. And pro bono, right? So yeah, that would be fantastic, but this is the, the, the second annual State of the District, but it is the third time in, in three years that we have gone in front of the community. And it is just a great way for the superintendent, for the board, and for APS. just a great way for um, the superintendent, for the board and for APS to be transparent and open and honest about how APS is doing. And I think that we have some good stories to tell. And so I am open for questions if there are any questions from the board.
Thank you, Member Jackson, for your presentation. Are there any questions from the board? All right. Hearing none. Uh, thank you, Member Jackson, for your presentation and thank you to the committee for the work on this. Um, really exciting and looking forward to the state's second annual State of the District Address. Uh, and so with that, we will go ahead and move on to agenda item number nine, which is the President's Report. Um, and so as usual, we'll start with public forum and acknowledging again that public forum is not an opportunity for dialogue. We do want each speaker to know that they were heard and that we are working with the administration on resolutions. Some of the issues that we heard tonight were regarding board governance, public school libraries and librarians, district professional development, expanded PSAT testing, welcome back from the district, quality working conditions, HVAC, teletherapy, technology asset allocation, supporting educators, policy committee recommendations, the policy on charters, early literacy goals and state mandated for, state mandated first grade dyslexia screener and integrity in anti-bullying. Um, next I wanted to share that uh, we do have another ad hoc committee that has been actively working. So it's the Ad Hoc Committee on Evaluating Board Guardrails. So this committee has met and has begun to develop a plan that will include, that does include the development of interim guardrails, which are intended to be measurable and specific, as well as a process and timeline for how and when the board will self-evaluate against the board guardrails. Final recommendations from this committee will be submitted to the board by mid-September for consideration on an October agenda. Um, next is I wanted to provide a brief overview of progress against guardrail two. Um, board members had the opportunity to review the guardrail two report and to ask questions, uh, but because it was on the consent agenda, it was not discussed. Um, so the board did adopt guardrail two with a clear expectation and that's that the superintendent will not allow resources to be allocated inequitably. The two interim guardrails, two point one and two point two, help us to monitor whether the district is meeting that expectation. And we're pleased to report that APS is not only meeting the mark, but exceeding it. Under interim guardrail two point one, the district set a goal to ensure that at least sixty-five percent of our classroom, of classrooms in priority schools, which are those with the highest needs, were covered by long-term substitutes. And APS didn't just meet that annual target, but it hit one hundred percent two years ahead of schedule. So this is super exciting and didn't want to let that moment go without acknowledgement just because it was on the consent agenda. Also, every classroom with a teacher vacancy had a consistent qualified adult in place, providing students with the stability and support that they need to succeed. So every single classroom with a teacher vacancy did have a consistent qualified adult in place, which is another huge success that we want to acknowledge and express appreciation for uh, for this work. Um, under interim guardrail two point two, the district committed to providing more direct support to principals who are in priority schools through instructional visits by assistant superintendents. The goal was seventy-five visits for the year. The district completed, that's my drumroll, not just seventy-five visits for the year, but two hundred and twenty-five visits, tripling the annual target and surpassing the three-year goal, not just the one-year goal, but surpassing the three-year goal of one hundred and fifty. So something else to celebrate that we didn't want to go, let go without mention. These visits provide important coaching, professional development and aligned leadership support grounded in a tiered model that ensures the schools with the most actually do receive the most attention. So thank you to the APS administration and the team for this incredible progress. Together, these results show that the district is serious about meeting guardrail two, so serious that they've already exceeded it. Uh, so congratulations, maybe a round of applause. Yeah, super exciting, not just to meet our goals, but to exceed them and our guardrails. Uh, so the next update that we have is a change to the Community Engagement Ad Hoc Committee membership. Um, and so as established by charter, this committee is ad hoc, but we are rotating members through. Um, and so we have actually been able to rotate through all members uh, to serve a period of time on that ad hoc committee. Um, and so we will now be subbing out the current representatives and subbing in new. Um, and so currently on the committee, we have uh, Member Benavides and Member Tapia Romero. Uh, and so just want to express appreciation and gratitude to Members Benavides and Tapia Romero for your service on the Community Engagement Ad Hoc Committee. And we will be starting over with the cycle of subbing in members, which will uh, come back to me who started. Um, so the Community Engagement Ad Hoc Committee membership will now be Member Jackson and uh, myself, Member Gonzalez. And then we'll cycle in um, the next member and I'm not quite sure why we went in this order, but the next one who went on after me was Member Dominguez. And so after that, perhaps we'll do Member Dominguez or we'll change some other cycle, but we can figure that out if you're interested in serving. Um, and then the next update is we uh, discussed in the last board meeting, our time use. Um, and so thank you to Member Astorga for serving as the secretary and leading that process, but also to Member Jackson for filling in while Member Astorga was out. Um, I did the time use tracker for the last quarter. Um, and in my presentation neglected to name the time use tracker for the next quarter. Um, at this one, we are going in a much more logical um, order. Um, and so we're going from District Three, me, to District Four, Member Benavides. And so Member Benavides will be responsible for doing our time use tracking for quarter three. Uh, so that concludes the President's Report. The next Board of Education meeting will be Wednesday, August twentieth at five PM in the Alice and Bruce King Educational Complex here at sixty-four hundred Uptown Boulevard Northeast and livestreamed at APS.edu. And with that, this meeting is adjourned.